Good evening. Welcome to the March 21st, 2022, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and ask you to all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up tonight, we have presentations and proclamations. And item A is a presentation in regard to Sunshine Week. We have representatives from the League of Women Voters here. I don't have a proclamation. Okay.
Yes, I'm Carol Anderson, representing Stillwater's League of Women Voters. And Sunshine Week we celebrate each year sometime in March around the birthday of James Madison. He was born on March 16th, 1751. He was our fourth president. He was a writer of many of the amendments, and he is certainly someone we want to respect. He was the one who said, "People must know what is happening with their governing bodies." And this is in the federal law, Freedom of Information Act. It's in our state law, open meetings, open records. And it's something that we want to emphasize, and I know the newspapers did the emphasis also on this. And I've asked you to sign a pledge. I think everyone but you, Mr. Joyce, have done it. Because you weren't here on this. Okay. We do thank you, and we know that you try. We hope that you try very hard to fulfill both the federal and the state laws. Thank you.
We do. Thank you so much for being here. Next up, I have a proclamation in recognition of National Safe Place Week. I think we have representatives from Payne County Youth Services. Hello. I'll go ahead and read this one, this proclamation, and then you can say a few words.
Okay.
Whereas the youth of Stillwater will determine the future strength of our country and be the bearers of our democracy. And whereas youth need a safe haven from various negative influences such as child abuse, substance abuse, depression, and crime, and youth need a readily available resource to assist them when faced with circumstances that comprise, that compromise their safety. And whereas the Safe Place Program is committed to protecting the youth of Stillwater by offering access to immediate help and safety for young people seeking assistance and guidance. And whereas designated locations where youth can get information and immediate help, Safe Place is found at businesses such as restaurants, convenience stores, movie theaters, and community buildings such as fire stations, libraries, and public transportation vehicles. And whereas the success of Safe Place is based on public-private collaboration between businesses, school systems, fire departments, law enforcement, and a network of volunteers. And whereas Stillwater is committed to demonstrate the importance of youth safety, prevention, and community response to identified needs. And whereas the Safe Place Program must meet performance standards relative to outreach and community relations to receive direct federal assistance as set forth in the Runaway and Homeless Youth Act. And whereas more than 1,500 communities in 38 states administer the Safe Place Program at more than 22,000 locations, and more than 387,000 youth have been helped at Safe Place locations or received counseling by phone as a result of the Safe Place information received at school and through community presentations. And whereas since program inception in 1983, more than 15 million youth have been educated through the National Safe Place Network's Safe Place Outreach Efforts, familiarizing them with the Safe Place sign and providing them with information about how to seek help in order to stay safe. Whereas increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access the help they need. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim that the week of March 20th through March 26th, 2022, as National Safe Place Week.
All right. Okay, well, just want to thank you guys for, again, every year proclaiming it as National Safe Place Week. We continue to have two to six, and sometimes more than that, kids access Safe Place every month. So it's very much a needed program. We have the fire stations, the library, the On Cues. We have so much support throughout Stillwater, so we appreciate that. I will also throw in that this is our 50th anniversary this year of providing completely free services. So Safe Place is just a huge outreach for us to let kids know that they can go into the fire department. Right, Carrie? The On Cues, Walgreens, and get immediate help. They also have a text-for-help program that we want to make sure everybody's aware of. They can text for help, and it goes immediately to the National Safe Place Office, and texts back to them the closest shelter or Safe Place agency or site. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. Appreciate all the work that you all do at Payne County Youth Services.
Thank you.
Any other pictures we need to take? Okay. Item four on the agenda is the Consent Docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or a motion on the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Next up, we have public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing. We do have at least one or two folks signed up under this portion. Let me make sure I get to the right spot. Bottom two. First up, we have Mr. Robert McLendon. Just as a reminder, please introduce yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak on the topic that's on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, city staff. I am the publisher. My name is Rob McLendon. I am the publisher of the Stillwater News Press at 211 West Ninth Street. Stillwater News Press has served the city residents for longer than any of us have been alive. I came on board in just September of last year because I believe that Stillwater deserves a factual source of news and information, and that's why I'm here. Because I cannot state strongly enough how much we oppose any encryption of the radio where the media cannot listen to it. I've been told that this is going to be for officer safety. I've been given hypotheticals. I've not been given anything even anecdotal, and I've certainly not been given anything that purports a trend here locally. Stillwater is not the first municipality to face this issue. Oklahoma faced, Oklahoma City has faced this issue. What did they do? They worked with their media to allow them to still monitor the dispatch channels. Tulsa took a little different, a different path. They said they don't care about the media, but they do care about government transparency. So they also left their channels open. But let's talk about right here in Stillwater. Every reporter that covers the city of Stillwater is sitting at that table right now. We're it. We're it. There is no one else that routinely covers the city of Stillwater. I went through vote with, through the proposal this afternoon with both of the reporters, line by line. And I can tell you, they fall in one of three categories. One, that this simply does not happen. Two, that if it did happen, we would of course abide by our own code of ethics and never release any type of public information. And three, that if you are going to start providing the information that you say you will, it will take significantly more staff, significantly more infrastructure to be able to do it. Covering breaking news is not easy. It is something that we do because we believe the citizens of Stillwater, the residents of Stillwater, deserve it. This weekend, Ashlyn was in a car accident in the middle of the night on Saturday and spent most of Sunday at a fires east of the city. Still kind of smells like a campfire. But just as you serve the public, we do as well. Freedom of the press is the third thing mentioned in the U.S. Constitution, right behind religion and freedom of speech. So we take our role in the community very seriously. But to be frank, you need us just as much as we need you. I moved to Stillwater 32 years ago to take a job at OSU. In that time, I've watched the city struggle time and time again to pass a bond election. So you actually are to be commended for the February 8th vote that I directly, I directly attribute to that increased trust. I'm assuming that bump says, "I'm done," but I want to leave you with a final thought. I humbly ask, whatever you do, let it be something that is in conjunction with our objective factual coverage, not something in lieu of it.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Next up, Miguel Nahara.
Good evening. I'm Miguel Nahara. I am a Stillwater police officer, but tonight I am here speaking on behalf of the Fraternal Order of Police. Recently, a discussion has occurred surrounding our new radio system. This should be a simple discussion based on officer safety and public safety. Officers across the nation utilize encrypted radios. This doesn't mean departments are trying to hide anything. It's simply about safety. Anything that can be done to provide more safety to officers is a no-brainer to me, and there is no doubt that encrypted radios offer more safety. Encrypted radios also allow for more privacy for our citizens. Dispatch and officers would be able to utilize any channel to relay private information rather than wait for a specific secure channel to become available. Imagine you are a loved one, find out someone in your family has been injured in an accident, or worst case, has passed away, and you learn that from someone online because someone listening to a scanner relayed that information. Or an officer is on a high-risk search warrant and a subject flees that house. We don't have to worry about switching to a secure channel because we don't have to worry about who's listening. We can simply get on our radio and say where the subject is going. I am in support of releasing information when appropriate. As you want privacy and respect during a difficult time, everyday citizens would like the same. This is not about locking the media out or allowing them to have access. This is about privacy and safety. There is a plan in place for media releases with accurate information and not just paper-selling or breaking news headlines. Every radio transaction I make, recording on my watch guard, audio on my body mic, or call for service that I go to is available to the media. But once the hype is down, it's not always worth their time. If we are truly concerned about public information and not just breaking news stories, we wouldn't be having this discussion or having to plead our case. Many of you have taken our Citizens Police Academy, and even some local reporters in this room have participated. And we discussed the homecoming parade crash and how thousands of media requests were done after that crash, but by the time they were available, only a few actually wanted them. You trust us to make split-second decisions, and I hope you trust us enough to know what is best for our new radio system. As the Acting President of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 102, I represent 83 sworn police officers, and we as a lodge favor encrypted radios. I ask that you stand with us and that you support the encryption. Our chief has a plan to release that information, and we support that plan. In the end, the privacy of our citizens and the safety of officers should outweigh the desires of front-page stories or action shots. I've sat in the very place each of you are sitting in tonight, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard the words, "What is staff's recommendation?" Well, in this instance, and with this staff and my other officers, we recommend encryption, and I ask that you stand with the first responders in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nahara. Okay, that is everyone I have signed up for items not on public hearing. So that will take us to our next item on the agenda, which is public hearings. For public hearing tonight, under item A, we have received public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit for a marijuana dispensary at 611 West High Point Drive. This is CC-22-36. Kimberly, did we have good notice? Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brady Moore, Chief Performance Innovation Officer. I'm here tonight to bring you the case that was first brought to you on March 7th and was tabled to tonight. Again, this is for the specific use permit, SUP 21-09, at 611 West High Point Drive. The area map that you see on the screen shows the purple hatch pattern of the subject site. It sits to the east of Boomer Road, kind of towards the end of High Point Drive. On the aerial map, the red square again shows the subject site. You'll notice that it's to the northwest of Simron Plaza. The applicant has a state OMMA license to operate a dispensary at this location. Here's some views, a couple pictures of the street view of the subject site. These street view pictures show that there is adequate commercial use for this use at this site. As we look to a zoning map, the zoning for this subject site is CS, commercial shopping. Our land development code requires a specific use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary to operate in CS zoning. As we look to a future land use map to see what our comprehensive plan forecasts for future zoning, again, here you can see that the subject site is highlighted by the hatch pattern, and it is in the red commercial area, which fits the specific use that we're looking at tonight. Before the public hearing, I do want to update you on the path through the Planning Commission for this SUP. On February 1st of '22, it was tabled to February 15th to gather legal guidance for proximity to the Stillwater High School baseball and softball indoor facility that was being used in Simron Plaza. That distance was about 860 feet. OMMA Council clarified that in regards to the thousand-foot proximity limit, the definition of schools does not apply to a property owned, used, or operated by a public or private school not used for classroom instruction on core curriculum, such as administrative buildings, athletic facilities, ballparks, fields, or stadiums unless it's located on the same campus as a building used for classroom instruction on core curriculum. On February 15th, '22, the item was again tabled by the Planning Commission to a date certain of March 1st to allow for a meeting to take place between the applicant and the Payne County Drug Court. Payne County Drug Court submitted a letter of objection on January 28th of this year, and that was included in your packet. On March 1st, Planning Commission recommended denial of this SUP request due to the public health and safety concerns, along with other comments from the commissioners, with a vote of five to zero. And with that, do you have any questions, the staff?
Thank you, Brady. Counselors, any questions? All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing. I have several folks signed up to speak, and the first, first name is Jose Sanchez. Just as a reminder, please introduce yourself, your name and address on the record, and you'll have five minutes to comment during public hearing.
Jose Sanchez, 407 South Lowry, Stillwater. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am here in the support of the SUP 21-09 for a dispensary at 611 West High Point Drive for the City of Stillwater's municipal ordinance.
Sir, can you stand just a little closer to the mic?
Yes, sir. I am here in support of the specific use permit, 21-09, for a dispensary at 611 West High Point Drive for the City of Stillwater's municipal ordinance 3416 that was passed, approved, and adopted on the 17th of September, 2018. I would like to present a brief history of the location and present, present some of the dynamics that are currently driving these changes and discussions that are taking place. We, my family, have occupied the 611 West High Point Drive property since 1999, 33 years. And we used part of the space as an office for our construction company, Tucson's General Construction, and leased the rest of the space to other businesses, including Bill Steen's Barber Shop, Pahama Incorporated, a software company, Trinity Construction, Seacrest Surveying, and various other businesses. Through the years, we acquired properties adjacent to the west, north, and east side of 611 West High Point Drive, except the 608 West High Point Drive, which starting point two, sold to Payne County Drug Court in 2009, listed as a not-for-profit corporation. In January, all the leases on my buildings expired, and I decided not to renew them and instead develop the property for our own use. We have been instrumental in cleaning up the area, landscaping, discouraging squatters, and alerting Stillwater Police to people in the area providing drugs and targeting clients of the Payne County Drug Court. During our remodel of the proposed dispensary location, we were tasked with several items that were required by the Fire Marshal, the city inspectors, in order to receive a compliance certificate from the City of Stillwater. We met those conditions in May of 2021. We submitted our application to the State Health Department, and were granted our dispensary license through OMA for our location. We look forward to establishing a relationship with the municipality that will be a positive and mutual benefit for us and the community. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Next up, I have Jose C. Sanchez.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jose C. Sanchez. My address, 407 South Lowry. During the plan, the Pan, sorry. During the Planning Commission meeting on February 15th, we offered to open a dialogue with the Payne County Drug Court to discuss their concerns and how we can work to meet them. Closer. I met with their director, Mr. Noel Bagwell, and we spoke at length about their concerns. First, it was the misconception of board members at the Payne County Drug Court that we would be operating a grow facility, and there would be a pervasive smell from cannabis plants during the grow cycle. I explained to him that as a dispensary, we do not grow the plants. We would only be supplying the end packaged products. Second, the director stated concerns that our dispensary may trigger and influence their clients to fail treatment. However, after further discussion, the director did inform me that they currently have practices in place to aid their clients should they feel triggered by any dispensaries, liquor stores, or bars throughout Stillwater. Clients are given the personal contact information of staff members so they can receive individualized therapy anytime, day or night. Further, as part of their contract, their clients are prohibited from entering dispensaries and must surrender their medical marijuana card, preventing them from legally purchasing marijuana products from any law-abiding dispensary. I stated that it is my intent to have information on hand for our patients on substance abuse, mental health awareness, and hotlines for available treatment centers and help centers. The director was very receptive to the idea, and he welcomed me to use the awareness literature and contact information they refer their clients to. Finally, my miss, my meeting with Mr. Bagwell concluded with him inviting my staff to meet with his after we opened, to share coffee, donuts, and to further discuss how we can continue working together. We are a minority, family-owned, vertically-integrated small business. We represent a key demographic in this industry and numerous medical marijuana patients who are business owners, employers, professors, and other professionals in Stillwater and the surrounding area. They are mindful about what they put into their bodies and very discerning about the quality of products they use and how they're cultivated. We support small businesses in our industry and source our products from the finest craft and artisanal growers in Oklahoma who are dedicated to using all-natural, vegan, and pesticide-free growing methods, proven to produce the purest and highest-quality plants available today. We also feature a full gallery in which we will showcase local artists, host events for both patients and professionals, and offer education to promote safer products, practices, and growing methods. We aim to set the standard for quality and service within our industry, and we look forward to continuing our positive impact within our community and the surrounding area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Francisco Sanchez.
Good evening. Francisco Sanchez, 605 West 49th Avenue. City of Stillwater Council members, we are committed to safely serving our clients and providing a clean, honest, and reputable business that stands out from the rest. Our dispensary features a check-in counter and waiting area that completely prohibits visitors from entering the area in which THC is sold without first presenting a valid medical marijuana license. Additionally, we adhere to the Oklahoma regulations on packaging for marijuana products, which may not be enticing to minors or promote overconsumption, and ensure that persons outside of a dispensary cannot see those contents unless they are physically, unless they physically open said package. We currently run a licensed grow operation that we opened to address the concern of clients about the quality and pureness of the products they use. Our grow has now received its first audit through OMA, the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority. We were found to be 100% compliant with zero violations, and we are informed that less than 10% of the grows inspected were able to accomplish a perfect compliance rating. And I'm going to read an excerpt from the email we received from the auditor. "I want to thank you for being so well-prepared for the inspection and for all the effort you have clearly put in maintaining such a clean facility. I did not find any compliance violations during my inspection, and I'd estimate that only about 10% of the facilities I have inspected have accomplished that. Please keep up the good work, and if you have any compliance-related questions or comments, feel free to reach out to me. Sincerely, Michael Parker, Compliance Inspector." Through our research of Oklahoma laws in the city of Stillwater, we have found that our request for a specific use permit does not violate any state laws or city ordinances. OMA has also reviewed our case and upholds their decision in issuing, and upheld their decision in the issuing use of a dispensary license for this location. Additionally, the City of Stillwater website states, "In reference to specific use permits for medical marijuana businesses, Oklahoma law gives each city that has zoning authority the right to regulate these facilities by zoning only. Stillwater can't refuse issuing specific use permits if the zoning allows for these facilities." Furthermore, openly in existence is a term used in Oklahoma legislature in regards to public schools. Simron Plaza property, according to the Payne County Records Office, states the title is under Stillwater National Bank and Trust Company. When using state-recommended websites to research schools in the area and their distance to our disciplinary dispensary location, we found no indication of a school being openly in existence within 1,000 feet of our dispensary location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Molly Delp.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for seeing us today. My name is Molly Delp. I live at 407 South Lowry. I'm an OSU Hospitality and Tourism graduate. I served on the Board of Hazel Mandela Art Gallery, and I worked for various restaurants throughout Stillwater the entire time I've been here. Currently, I'm a server devoted, which is the Crate Myrtle's New Ramen Shop. We also hold high expectations for Stillwater. We've been here for a long time. We've been serving the community. We're excited to develop with the surrounding TIF projects. Their mission aligns with that of the Lakeview Landings and their proposal. The Lakeview Landing stated their goal was to support diversity and accessibility as a destination for people of all cultures. a destination for people of all cultures and walks of life. We're curating an art gallery in our waiting area. We're going to showcase art exhibits from BIPOC artists and creators while addressing topics like criminal justice reform, mental and natural health. We'll host speakers, we'll host storytellers. We love that Lakeview Landing includes plans for a farm-to-table restaurant, and we'll host a farmer's market right next door. There are direct neighbors that complements our mission of supporting local vendors, choosing organic. We love the energy that the Power Stage will bring to the area and are thrilled to have an entertainment venue, a rooftop bar. Noble Ray Brewing Company, as our close neighbors, just one block north of us. High Point Drive is changing. My hope is that the council will remain open-minded as we discuss the development of this area as an entertainment district. During our Planning Commission meeting with Jana and Mike, they stated they felt that our dispensary was in a secluded area, not on a main road. Citizens of Stillwater had other alternatives. That's not necessarily the case here. We exclusively seek products grown without synthetic fertilizers or pesticides. Our future clients care deeply about what they are putting into their bodies and how bad farming practices can affect them in the long run. I think having a dispensary whose staff is in open communication with a treatment facility is forward-thinking and shows that we do care for the welfare of our community. Along with reaching out to the Payne County Drug Court, we also reached out to Grand Lake Mental Health Clinic here in Stillwater. We reached out to other facilities within a 50-mile radius. Partnerships make our community stronger. Our initiative to work with our neighbors and maintain an open communication with treatment facilities across Oklahoma shows that we are committed to being an asset and a positive investment in the personal well-being of the people of Stillwater. We will contribute economically to this area. We will do it responsibly and ethically. I would be happy to clarify any points and answer any of your questions. We look forward to keeping an open dialogue with you and our neighbors in the Power District. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I don't have anyone else sign up to speak on this item, so at this point, I will close the public hearing. Brady's already let us know what the Planning Commission recommendation was on this item, so I will open it up to the council for comments, questions, motions, or other thoughts.
All right, so there was some conversation a couple weeks ago that prompted the delay about proximity to a Stillwater Public Schools facility. It is on?
Yes, it is on.
About proximity to a Stillwater Public Schools facility that is a core education facility in the old Wonditorium Building. And as I understand what I've read today, that basically because that facility does not have a sign on it, clearly identifying it as a Stillwater Public School, that doesn't in any way cause a problem for this petition, this request. Kimberly, is, you want to prepare to weigh in on that?
I don't think that it turns solely on the signage. I, the standard, there's a couple of things going on. There's been a couple of versions of amendments to the state legislation. The rules and regulations have some contradictory standards in them, but the guidance that we received from OMMA was that the license has been issued. So at this point, in order to object to the determination of the proximity to the school, there is a municipal objection form where we can seek that. That review is done at the time the license is either renewed or transferred. But in response to your comments regarding the signs, that all goes to that standard of, I don't want to misquote it, but openly in existence. So yes, I think that would be a factor, but that's another thing that's incredibly difficult for me to give a definitive answer on this is because OMMA is the decision-maker of how to interpret that standard, not the city.
Okay, so we really don't have any choice but to either approve this or to approve this with, there was some language about, we had a second option for approval.
Sure. You certainly still have choices. Cities can issue through their normal SUP process. Under the code, you can approve, you can deny, you can approve with conditions, as long as you state those reasons in the record. Today, you could approve the SUP subject to review by OMMA. That review would be done at the time that the license renews, and if OMMA either declines to review it or disagrees with our objection, then the license would be renewed and they would continue it, no detriment to the license holder.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we've been pretty fortunate that out of all of the ones that we have approved, there's not been challenges or issues or things like that that have, so here we sit with some things. But one thing that speaks in my mind is that we do need to follow, at least right now, what OMMA has cited. That gives us our current guidance and our current way that we need to look at things. I've been impressed with your reaching out to your neighbors and having difficult conversations with them when they are treating the very people that, you know, might have an issue. But in my mind, if someone has an issue with the drugs, they're going to find them no matter whether they're next door or across the street or whatever. And so that is, to me, I appreciate the conversations and protecting, hopefully, someone that might have, have a challenge with that and working, hopefully, with Starting Point Two and doing that. I'm also impressed with the way that you have organized and kept up going through this process despite these challenges. Despite any of our personal opinions on this, we do need to realize that right now our guidance, guidance is OMMA, and they've given you a stellar review and audit on what you have put in place, and we need to recognize that.
I think, I appreciate the speakers that are here tonight, certainly the, your family and the family business is, seems to be well-run, impressive operation, and we appreciate the fact that you're doing that business here in Stillwater. And, and it's a, you know, it's a credit to you all, what you've been able to do so far, and as Vice Mayor Zanotti said, the outreach that you've done is commendable as well. I, I think this case highlights some of the many, many problems with Oklahoma's medical marijuana's laws, especially in relation to how cities interact with, with the state on these, on these topics. We don't have, we don't have as much discretion when it comes to an SUP of this nature than we would have with any other business in our community. We, we are preempted from discussions that we could have about other businesses just because this is a medical marijuana facility. That's nothing against you all personally or the business in, in, you know, this specific business. It's just a matter of fact that the city council is allowed much greater latitude in discussing these kinds of issues about other types of businesses, and that is a, a real problem when it comes to the way Oklahoma's medical marijuana laws are written. But they're written the way they're written. And while there may be concerns here, there may be a need for a larger conversation, I agree also with Vice Mayor that OMMA has made a determination about this proximity. I, I do think that there's a reasonable, I was going to ask Kimberly, is it, is it only the municipality that can challenge that determination? Can the school district challenge that directly if they feel like it's too close?
So we were guided under 63 OS for 26.1. It is a municipal government objecting to the continued licensure based on the proximity setback.
So, I mean, I think there's a possibility that that could still happen, especially if Stillwater Public Schools feels strongly about the proximity to that facility, and there, there are signs on the front of that building. It, it is noticed as a virtual academy, so maybe folks don't understand that there are people and students in that building on a regular basis taking classes. So I think there's an open question to be addressed there in the future. But as this issue is being presented to us tonight, this business has a valid OMMA permit, and I don't see any, any legitimate reason under our code to say that, that they shouldn't be able to receive an SUP under the circumstances that were presented. I don't love those circumstances. I, I don't have anything, again, not personally against this business. If it was 300 feet farther to the northwest, there would be no issue at all. You know, so it's, it's not a specific, you know, problem here. It's an overall problem, I think, that we have with the way state law functions on this, on this topic. But it is what it is. We operate under the laws that were given, and that's, to me, it, it seems like it's something that we'll need to approve. Any further comments, councilors? Is there a motion on the item?
Motion to reject the Planning Commission's recommendations and approve this specific use permit for the property located at 611 West High Point Drive. Second.
We have a motion and a second to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and to approve this specific use permit. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that SUP is approved. All right, that takes us to item eight, general orders. Under eight A is approved allocation of $8,784,987.88 in ARPA funding towards projects related to the COA Pipeline, raw water storage, and the water treatment plant. Mr. McLennie.
Good evening, John McLennie, Special Projects. The city was recently awarded 8.78 million through the American Rescue Plan Act, or otherwise known as ARPA. We received our first payment in October of 2021, and we received the second half of that money in October of 2022. You have until December 31st of 2024 to allocate the funding, and then until December 20, 31st of 2026 to spend it. There are four eligible uses of that money. You can replace lost public sector revenue, respond to the public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic, such as assistance to small businesses, provide premium pay for essential workers, or invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The restrictions are that it cannot be used to offset tax reductions or to delay a tax increase, and it cannot be deposited into any pension fund. Since water infrastructure is one of the allowable uses of the funding, and as council is aware, we've had significant water infrastructure needs, including the COA Pipeline, raw water storage, and the water treatment plant, on several occasions presented to council, our recommendation is that the funding be used for projects related to those items. And I have a motion, but I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, John. Councilors?
Given our water needs, I think this is a great use of the money.
Was there a discussion, or I assume there was a discussion, John, about these other possible uses and whether we needed to use it to replace any lost revenue? I mean, we really haven't had any lost revenue. Were there any other, of those other uses that seemed close in terms of where we might use this?
I think that the, the needs on the water infrastructure are so huge that, that it, yes, there was discussion, but it didn't really rise to the same level as the water infrastructure needs.
Are there any specific pieces of the project that you anticipate this $8 million will go towards?
My understanding from talking to Monty, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll use this for the engineering of the various projects that we'll implement.
What is your recommended motion?
Recommend a motion to approve the allocation of ARPA funding totaling $8,784,987.88 towards projects related to the COA Pipeline, raw water storage, and the water treatment plant, and direct staff to prepare a resolution and budget amendments for review and approval at the April 4th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting.
Thank you, John. Councilors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation as to the allocation of ARPA funding. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved. Thank you, John. You're still up there because item eight B is to authorize staff to submit a rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant application in the amount of 22.6 million for Duck Street and Western Road reconstruction projects.
Yes, these are, the acronym for these are RACE grants, and RACE grants are for surface transportation infrastructure projects. It's part of the infrastructure funding that was recently approved. The grant awards can be from 5 to 25 million, and the expected match amount is 20%. We have a source for the match, and that will be the Transportation Fee Fund, and the applications are due April 14th. And staff proposes two potential projects for these funds. One is to reconstruct Western Road to add a left-turn lane, storm sewers, curb and gutter, and active transportation pathways from 12th to 6th Avenue at a cost of 8.4 million. The second is to reconstruct Duck Street from 6th Avenue to Elm as a tree-lined boulevard with protected left turns and active transportation paths, and then due to the limited right-of-way from Elm Street to Boomer Road to reconstruct the road and add active transportation paths at a cost of 14.2 million. I have a recommended motion on that, and I'll open it up for questions.
Councilors?
I don't have any questions, but I think it just, it bodes well to show how much each of these projects cost, and I would love to get $25 million to get that, that all. That would be amazing, so kudos for finding this grant opportunity and, I guess, potential.
I would just, it's exciting, the RACE grants, the, you know, if you notice in that acronym, it talks about sustainability and equity, and I love that in our description of those projects, that we're looking at some of those types of things with storm sewers and active transportation pathways and things like that. I think this is one of those opportunities in the infrastructure bill where we can elevate our projects beyond the basics to get a bigger impact for the community. Usually, we're kind of shrinking projects to make it fit into grants. This is an opportunity to expand our ideas of what those transportation projects could be, so, so thank you for considering some of those things. It's an awesome, awesome opportunity.
What's your recommendation, John?
We recommend a motion to authorize staff to submit the RACE grant applications for Duck Street and Western Road projects in the total amount of 22.6 million.
Councilors?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that's approved. Thank you, John. Item eight C, approve the use of safety, security, encryption of police and fire department radio traffic with new public safety radio system. Chief Watts.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors. On December 20th, 2021, city council approved the lease purchase of a new digital radio system for police and fire for Motorola Solutions. One of the features of the new radio system is that it allows for safety, security encryption of police and fire department radio traffic and prevents scanners and phone scanner apps from monitoring public safety radio transmissions. This public safety enhancement is, is an important component of the new radio system and is not an option with our current radio system. Some local media object to the safety, security encryption feature, and their concerns will be addressed during this meeting. Police Chief Jeff Watts and Fire Chief Terry Essery will present, will present the need for the safety, security encryption for public safety. Chief Public Information Officer Don Jones will present an overview of the new media relations process. Once finalized, it will be followed to provide factual information promptly. Emergency Operations Director Rob Hill is present to answer any questions about technical issues with the new radio system. Following the presentation, staff is available to answer questions and/or provide additional information. Benefits of safety and security encryption. It protects officers, emergency responders, and the community members from individuals with ill intentions who listen to scanners to identify officer's location, response routes, approximate arrival time, and plans for apprehension. As an example, we often respond to holdup alarms, burglaries, and in-progress crimes of a violent nature. Officers responding communicate with other officers as to where they're arriving at, where they're coming from, where they've parked at, and even what position they're taking up on the building or residence. Somebody with a scanner app on their phone can listen to everything we're saying. They know exactly where the officer is, where they're coming from, when they're arriving, and actually where they're standing probably outside of the residence or the business. The city has an obligation to protect citizens who share sensitive and private personal information on calls for service, including their name, date of birth, social security date of birth, social security number, address, emergency details, medical history, and other details. Oftentimes, when we contact people in the public, if they don't have an ID on them and we need to check them for warrants or just check their driver's license status on a traffic stop, we communicate with dispatch their name, their date of birth, oftentimes their social security number, and other identifying information that is used to confirm whether this person has warrants or has a valid driver's license. Anybody listening to that information on a scanner or a scanner app has access to that person's personal information, and we don't currently have a way to protect that. Encryption allows us the ability to protect their personal information so that they don't become a victim of identity theft. There's an obligation to protect those in emergencies who are either sharing disturbing and traumatic information about themselves or what they're witnessing. Officers respond to calls for service that are death scenes, medical emergencies, and incidents of a personal nature at residences. I myself, as a police officer, and every officer that the the union represents have responded to those scenes. Maybe not breathing, elderly person in cardiac arrest, a medical emergency of some type or some type of incident of a personal nature, that information is immediately broadcast over our current radio. Can you imagine if you or one of your loved ones was in medical distress and people knew your exact address and what they were responding for? They now have access to your most intimate and personal moment in your life. There is a duty to be reverent to the immediate next of kin and death notification process. On more than one occasion, we have gone to death scenes, and before we can get in contact with the next of kin, they've already been notified through social media. Now, I can't say that that all came from a scanner, but I know that information is out there. When we respond to a fatality accident, we respond to a fatality at someone's residence, it's very easy for someone to surmise where we're at and whose house we're at just by simply listening to the address and the type of call. And so it's very easy to to see how that information can get placed on any type of social media platform. We have a very active social media community, and they oftentimes will publish everything we're doing and what the call for service is. So you will have somebody on social media saying, I know that, I heard all the sirens, what's going on? Well, scanner traffic says this. And that information sometimes can be very damaging to our public and their most intimate moments in their life. It prevents theft suspects who are committing crimes from using scanner apps and scanners to monitor police activity. And I will talk about that a little more later in this presentation. It allows law enforcement the potential for a few more minutes to assess the situation and collect factual information without additional distractions. We want to be transparent. We want our community to know what's going on. We want them to know if there's a danger, if there's a road blockage, if there's something that could put them in harm's way. But we want to make sure they're getting accurate information that is credible and timely. And Chief Information Officer Don Jones will get up here in a few and talk about our plans moving forward there. It prevents, prevent false information and confusion from being developed or shared based on scanner traffic since information shared in initial calls for service are not necessarily what has occurred and may have been misconstrued. A very simple explanation of this bullet point is oftentimes we get calls of shots fired, and it's a transformer that's blown. Officers can be responding somewhere for a man with a gun call, and it could be someone carrying a broom or some other item. Can you imagine that same call going out near your child's school and somebody getting on social media and saying the police are responding to a school where your child's at for a man with a gun call? Those initial calls that we get from citizens are not always accurate, and oftentimes, they are based off of assumptions. We need time to get there and get the facts so that we can get that information out to our public so they're better informed and we don't cause unnecessary panic. Apprehensions with our safety and security system, the media and public will not be able to hear Stillwater Police Department or Stillwater Fire Department scanner traffic. Some local media have expressed concerns that without scanners, they will not receive information in a timely manner, and they question our transparency. Public Information Officer, Chief Public Information Officer Don Jones will talk about timely release of news-related information. But I want to talk about our transparency and open records. Everything that the police department does is open to public records. If you call the police department and you say, I have an emergency at my house and I need the police here right now, that phone call and that dispatcher's interaction with you is a public record and is available upon request for a public record release. The dispatcher's interaction with you and their call to the officer in the in the car on the radio is public information and available to our citizens. The officer's response to that call when they arrive and they turn on their car camera, and staff approved the purchase of body cameras, we're waiting on those to come in, but they've been delayed like all other COVID-related items. That car camera footage and that audio recording is available to the public. That officer's interaction with the victim, the suspect, the witness is all recorded and available to the public. When that officer completes that call and they write a report on everything that occurred on that call, that is available to the public. When that officer gets in his car and tells the dispatcher they're back in service and gives any follow-up information, all of that is recorded and available to the public. In addition to all of that availability and transparency, if there are any additional questions, the media or anyone else can reach out to our public information officers or Chief Public Information Officer and request additional information. Chief Public Information Officer Don Jones will present an outline of the new media relations process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Don Jones. You all have heard the benefits regarding safety, security encryption feature with the new radio system, and you have heard the concerns, and we understand both. Most of the concerns shared by our media friends can be addressed through a healthier media relations process. Our police, fire, and emergency responders deal with various situations, some larger than others, some that could affect the safety of those nearby, or affect flow of traffic in an area of town, or some situations that do not affect anyone other than those directly involved. Currently, we are developing a process that will balance timeliness with our existing transparency while keeping public safety the priority. Our communications response will be based on the particular situation we are dealing with at the time. Does the situation affect members of our community, or could it in the future, or is it newsworthy? As we are developing our process, we have been collecting feedback from various municipalities, government agencies, and media. Again, depending on the situation, our communications may include a media alert, that would be, again, depending upon the situation, that would be a very quick response with the fact's timeliness. So the PIO will email initial facts quickly once they are available. A news release, the PIO will email detailed information within twenty-four hours of the situation. Again, that is dependent upon what the situation is. Social media, we have not been utilizing police and fire social media for alerts and news releases. However, we will use them moving forward depending on the situation. The webpage will include media alerts, news releases, and community alerts if our community members sign up to receive them. And we have that feature now that we will put things on our web, sorry, on our webs, our website with different alerts, and if you have signed up to receive those alerts, then you get that notification, and we would build that feature in for this also. Increased media relations and communications training for our PIOs and the city's communications department as a whole. I have only been here for six months, and as I've been processing and working with various folks and listening to their thoughts and ideas and concerns and ways of improvement and the things that we're doing right, it's been, it's, it's been great to collect that information. But we would like to implement greater, richer training for all of our communications department and including our PIOs across all departments. Our media relations process will be in place prior to safety, security encryption. Again, we're still building this out. We are also reviewing and updating our crisis communications plan. That is of interest because our crisis plan also includes what, when, and how we communicate that important information with our public and media. As stewards of the city, we work for our community members, and we take our role very seriously. In all departments, we continuously evaluate our performances and services to identify strengths, weaknesses, and methods for improvement. Ultimately, we believe the safety, security encryption, radio, and media relations process are steps in the right direction and significant improvements that would benefit our community. As our community continues to grow, we want to be good partners with our media, working together for a greater Stillwater while also upholding the highest priority, the safety of our community members, patrons, and public safety responders. And I will include that I met with, they're, they're here with this, with our news press folks last week, and that's just the beginning. I definitely plan to continue working with them. I enjoy working with them to build, to have their voice and input on this. So, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilors. I want to provide you with a few examples of non-hypothetical incidents. Stillwater Police Department Report Number two thousand and twelve eighty-three seventy-three. Just going to give you a summary. Undercover officers made two controlled purchases of marijuana from a suspect in Stillwater. The suspect left his residence each time to meet with the informant nearby the suspect's house. The suspect was arrested and a search warrant was served at his house. A search of the residence revealed additional drugs, drug paraphernalia, drug sales ledgers, currency, and a working police scanner that was programmed to the Stillwater Police Department's main frequency. Report Number two thousand and thirteen forty-eight sixty-nine. Officers from the Stillwater Police Department, Oklahoma State University Police Department, Payne County Sheriff's Office, served a search warrant in the seventy-six hundred block of East Fourth Avenue. The residence was secured by our special operations team. Once the residence was secured and the occupants were detained, investigators searched the residence. Inside, they located twelve bags of methamphetamines, a loaded pistol next to a police scanner that was actively monitoring the Payne County Sheriff's Office, and a second loaded pistol in a nearby room. The residence also contained an active video surveillance system. Case Number two thousand and fourteen twenty-one seven seventy-four. Officers from the Stillwater Police Department and the Payne County Sheriff's Office served a felony arrest warrant and a search warrant in the forty-six hundred block of South Perkins Road after two controlled methamphetamine buys from a suspect who lived in Stillwater. The suspect was arrested out of his vehicle. A search of the vehicle resulted in the seizure of trafficking weight of methamphetamine, drug sales ledger, and a drug sales ledger. A search of the suspect's shop resulted in the seizure of stolen property, methamphetamines, LSD, psilocybin mushrooms, oxycodone tablets, drug packaging materials. In the office of the shop was a working security camera and a police scanner. The police scanner was actively scanning police frequencies. Case Number two thousand and seventeen twenty-five seventy. Officers from the Stillwater Police Department served a search warrant in the twenty-eight hundred block of East Rain Tree. Occupants in the residence were secured, and the residence was searched. Officers located a working police scanner that was actively monitoring the Stillwater Police Department radio transmissions. Next to the scanner was a loaded pistol. In the same room was a loaded shotgun leaning up against the wall. Officers located packaged methamphetamines, scales, a drug ledger, and drug paraphernalia. Inside the residence, officers located a stolen nine-millimeter handgun, a stolid rifle, and other stolen property that was valued in excess of three thousand dollars. Case Number two thousand and twenty twenty-six three thirty. Officers were dispatched to a call of a suspicious male in the vehicle in the eighteen hundred block of South Perkins Road. Officers arrived and found a male sleeping in a van. Next to the male was a loaded AR-15 rifle. The male was secured and a large knife was taken off his belt. Inside the vehicle, officers discovered a police scanner, heroin, and drug paraphernalia. The AR-15 had been reported stolen to OSUPD, and the suspect was a convicted felon. Lieutenant Manuel is the Criminal Investigations Commander. He informed me that when he was working property crimes as a detective, he interviewed an individual who is part of a known group of car hoppers. Car hoppers are those individuals who go around in the middle of the night and check your car doors to see if they're unlocked so that they can steal your valuables. We take numerous reports from our victims throughout the city on a weekly basis from unlocked cars where their property was stolen. The individual told Lieutenant Manuel that he used a scanner app on his phone and a Bluetooth earpiece to monitor police radio traffic while he was burglarizing cars. One of the options that we have with our current software system for dispatching is that we can enter what's called a hazard on a residence. And a hazard alerts our dispatch to a danger at that residence that officers have identified. We have several hazards on residence that just say, police scanner. That means that the officer went there, found something that concerned them, either a hostile resident, mental illness or something of that nature, and they wanted other officers responding to know that those people had a police scanner. But there's also been others where they entered a, they entered a note on that hazard that said, for example, in the twenty-one hundred block of West Twenty-Fourth, resident is paranoid and has a scanner, doesn't like the police. There's another one in the eleven hundred block of South McDonald's that all calls to this residence must be dispatched by our mobile data terminal or to our undercover officers by phone because someone in the area has a scanner, and everyone leaves when the police respond there. Another one on Pine Wood Circle is an individual that we've dealt with multiple times who has serious mental illness problems, and it is noted that he has a police scanner. Another thing that we can do during dispatch calls for services, our dispatchers can send messages through our mobile data terminals to our officers as they're responding. And I'm not going to go through this whole list, but I had Aaron Kelly, our IT administrator, do a, do a word search for scanner, and he came up with some of these conversations between the dispatch and the officer. I just want to give you a couple that I think highlight the dangers to officers. This is one that was an officer responding to a suicidal subject, and it's stated, the subject is tired of living, has firearms at the residence, and has a scanner. Here's another one for a suicidal female that has been talking about killing herself, does have a twenty-two pistol, does have a scanner. Here's another one of a caller who's the manager of an apartment complex who says that when the police respond, everybody's alerted by somebody who has a scanner, and everybody's gone when the police arrive. I'm going to drop down to another one. It was a domestic violence call. The victim had bruises all over their body, and the dispatcher noted to the responding officers that they could hear a scanner in the background and could hear our main channel as the call was being dispatched. I could give you several more, but I think you get the the point here. There are other agencies in Oklahoma that are encrypted. We are not the first to do this. Norman is encrypted, Broken Arrow is encrypted, Jinx is encrypted, Lawton is going to be encrypted, Jinx and Midwest City are moving toward encryption, all for the same reasons that I'm here tonight. I want to talk about some hypotheticals. We are in the hypothetical business. We are in the risk mitigation business. Our job is to protect our citizens and protect our employees. When you go to an OSU football game and you look up on top of the stadium, you will see that there are special operations team members placed up there. They're placed up there because of the hypothetical case that somebody in that crowd could commit an act of violence and harm or kill our citizens. That's why they're there. That's why we have school resource officers in the school, is to prevent an act of violence against our students. Walkaround. When you go to walkaround, you can't look any direction and not see at least two, four, six, eight officers. The reason they're there is to make sure that no catastrophic event occurs that we can't mitigate because we know what happens when we don't. The parade crash of two thousand and fifteen taught us a very valuable lesson. If we don't take risk mitigation, if we don't do everything we can to protect our citizens, things like that will not be avoided, and we will have more tragedy. Every four years, we replace our body armor. Next year, I will be coming for this council to ask for somewhere between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars to buy body armor for our police officers. $100,000 to buy body armor for our police officers. In the 30 years that I've been a police officer, no officer has been shot in the body armor. But we would be negligent and irresponsible not to provide that key piece of safety equipment to our officers. Risk mitigation. We never know when a crime's going to happen. We never know when an ambush is going to occur. We never know when an officer's going to be placed in danger. But we provide that body armor just in case it happens. I recently attended an FBI training, and I want to give you just a couple of really quick stats that I think really stuck with me. From 1987 to 1996, 11% of the officers murdered in the line of duty were murdered in an unprovoked attack or an ambush. An unprovoked attack is a crime of opportunity. An officer is setting somewhere or is not involved in an arrest situation, and they are murdered just simply because they are police officers. From 1997 to 2006, that number jumped from 11% to 17%. From 2007 to 2016, 21% of police officers killed in the line of duty were ambushed or killed in an unprovoked attack. I, as the Chief of Police, and my staff, have decision-making guidelines that we look at every day for every decision we make. That number one guideline is employee safety. Number two is the service we provide to our community. Three is our professionalism, and four is our efficiency. Very rarely does a decision meet all four bullet points. Encryption meets all four, and I've explained why. At this time, myself, Chief Essery, and Chief PIO, Don Jones, would be glad to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Chief. Aside from this specific presentation, I really appreciate you being up here tonight to give us a passionate and detailed explanation of some of the issues that officers face here in Stillwater. I appreciate the overview and just sometimes the education that we all need about what you all do on a day-to-day basis, and appreciate you being here and presenting that to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselors, questions about the presentation about encryption?
Well, first, let me say that I absolutely support encryption. I think it is something that is best practice. It's something that we should be doing as a city. I think it's important for the safety of our officers and our firefighters, and I think it's the right thing to do. I do have a significant concern about not allowing the news press to have access to the traffic on the primary dispatch channels. And frankly, I find it a little ironic that just over an hour after we all took the Sunshine Pledge, we're being asked to restrict access to the news press of the traditional, the normal, radio traffic. And I've heard a lot of things that you've expressed about safety, and I get all of that, and I agree with all of that. But Michelle Charles is the wife of a retired firefighter. I don't think she's going to come gunning for you guys. Why are we so concerned about the news press having access to this information?
It's not the news press. If we unrestrict it to the news press, we have to unrestrict it to everyone else. We can't give special treatment to one entity and not give it to another.
Well, I think we can. I think that we could make a decision to allow the media, the local media, to have access. And frankly, TV 31 is not going to want a scanner. I doubt that any of the radio stations are going to want a scanner. You know, Kali might, certainly the news press would, maybe the Perkins Journal, but I doubt it. We're talking about maybe one or two entities that are really even going to want this. And we could make that available, and I actually talked to Rob about this in a little bit because he was presented as the guy which is the technical expert. I am presuming we can provide radios that only scan the primary dispatch channels.
Rob, would you like to address that?
That is correct.
No, Rob Hill.
Rob Hill.
Sorry, Rob Hill. Rob. (laughter) Rob Hill, Emergency Management Director, City of Stillwater. If it was determined that a primary dispatch channel was to be left open and unencrypted, the news press and everybody else could purchase a radio that could hear that primary dispatch channel.
Okay, my question is, if we leave the channel encrypted, and we either provide or offer to sell to the news press a radio that was only scanning on the primary dispatch channels, is that technically possible?
So, with the agreement that we have with Oakwind, which is a system that we wanted to pair ourselves with in the overall process, the Oklahoma-wide information network, DPS would probably have a big disagreement with this and not want us to do this, and would most likely know our mutual understanding.
I'd like an answer to that question rather than a hypothetical. I mean, I'd like us to get that information.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that. I'll reach out to DPS and find out how they feel about it. Because worst-case scenario, if we decide that if they're going to say no to that, and we go forward, the most they'll do is not allow us on their system.
Okay. Don, where's Don? There's Don. Talk to me a little bit about what timely means, because I suspect our definition is a little different than Rob's might be.
Timely means dependent upon the situation. So, I could give you a couple of examples. There was a situation, again, I've been here six months. There was a situation that occurred, a very unfortunate, upsetting situation that occurred just a few months ago, and an individual did pass away. It was a person and vehicle collision. And we did, we pushed that alert out as soon as we possibly could, once we were able to notify the one next of kin. So, we had it ready to go within, I would say, probably seven minutes of the situation occurring. But Chief Watts and I actually worked on that together, and we waited until we were able to notify the individual's child. And then, we were able to push that alert out, and it was still very timely, but it was as timely as we possibly could with respect to the deceased and family member. Another situation-
So, there's a fire east of town. How long's it going to take to get that information to the news press?
Okay, so, if you're wanting to know about the fire that occurred yesterday-
That's what would be an example, sure.
Okay. So, let me get to that in just two seconds, because I'm going to give you another example, okay? So, another situation that happened was at Sixth and Perkins, and there was a chase, right? So, that happened. Once we were notified that it had ended, and then we had that alert out, I would say probably within 10 to 12 minutes at the most, maybe 10 minutes, of that happening. But we will send that alert out once we're notified that, hey, we have the immediate facts, and that the area is clear. When we send that out, we know for fact that it's going to be shared on social in different areas, so we want to make sure that it is okay for that to be shared and that the information is factual. For example, when we get to that point, because we're not there yet, okay? So, we're not yet at implementing this media relations process. I want to emphasize that. We're still developing it. We're still building it. So, for example, the fire yesterday, right, at Lakeview. So, if there wasn't a scanner involved, then, you know, dependent upon the situation, I could see that playing out differently. I literally was thinking it the whole time because I went out there. And so, how would this play out? Well, what would play out is once we are, once I made aware of the situation, or our PIO who's over that area, who's over fire, is alerted of the situation, I'm assuming from Chief Essery, because Chief Watts and I work closely together now, and Chief Essery and I will work together also, or his PIO. So, when we get to that situation, ideally, it would be, hey, here's what's going on. This is a big deal. This does affect members of our community. It does affect, you know, traffic, that kind of thing, right? So, like what I explained earlier, those kind of factors. Then, I, or the PIO, would be able to send out that alert. Now, I will tell you this also. We'll also have to watch our perimeters as far as who's coming in there and who's going into next to the fire and that kind of thing. We're talking about areas, they're not safe. It's not a safe area. You know, of course, we want coverage and help, and I'm going to be very transparent with this. The city and the media working together as partners is a great thing to alert our community and to keep them safe. However, in a situation like this, we've got to set some parameters as far as how far we go into this area. I, as a city employee, do not need to be in the way of our firefighting professionals doing what they need to do. So, we'll have to set parameters with that also.
So, are you staffing around the clock?
Okay, well, actually, right now, we're doing-
Oh, no, you're not now.
I appreciate that, Counselor Clark. I will tell you this. I think we're doing a really good job with staff of two and a half in communications right now, but we are definitely hiring and building out this process, and hopefully we'll have some really great folks on the team very soon.
But is it your expectation you're going to staff 24/7/365?
If there is an emergency and there's a situation that needs to be addressed as far as the media is concerned, to this level of significance, you bet. Absolutely. I take my job very seriously, and I know that others do as well, and when it comes to communicating important information that affects the safety and well-being of our community members and our media need to be aware, I don't care what time it is, I will definitely be part of the team to get that out. Now, if it's like 3 o'clock in the morning, please call me a couple of times, just so I hear the phone, but I will definitely do my dead-level best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Counselors, other questions?
I guess I did have a question. It was mentioned that, I mean, it's really a complicated conversation we're having today. It was mentioned that some of the larger municipalities in the state have gone a slightly different direction. I guess I don't totally understand the direction that they went. Are you familiar with Oklahoma City's decision and what they, how they proceeded?
You know, that decision, each community makes that decision based off of what their community feels is best for that community. And so, I think, you know, in Oklahoma City, I can't speak as to why they made the decision to leave their Channel 1 open, or their main channel open.
So, I guess I'm wondering, is that what they did? Is that the specifics in terms of they left it open just to the media, or they left it just open?
It's open.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't thread the needle that Counselor Clark was talking about.
Counselor Clark, also, to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Jones was saying, we have a public information officer, and as we build out the media plan, we will make sure that our personnel are available 24/7 to get information out. As you've probably seen, if you follow any of our social media in the past, we've used our current police personnel. You know, Sergeant Lau's pretty active on there, and even Miguel Nahara, who just spoke, is active on there. We will train out certain people on each shift to be able to push out those alerts to get that information out much quicker than if we even have to call a PIO. So, the roadway's blocked because we have a traffic accident, we're going to have other people on staff that can just push out those real little blurbs like that, but not give the full story. That will come at a later time with the public information officer or the chief public information officer.
I do think that policy is very important. I think, you know, having staff's commitment to, you know, yes, you're committed, but, you know, if something happens and there's somebody else in that role that's less committed, I think that policy becomes really very critical to that part, that piece of transparency there, and making sure. I think, right, there's some undefined things, like how fast is fast, and how, you know, if it's the middle of the night, is that still a fast? Is it, if it's, do you have staff for it? What is the staff impact of that? I think developing a policy with less undefined things seems like a really important way to meet that expectation of information.
Counselor Delasky, I agree with you, and that's why we are working on that plan to ensure that by the time our implementation of the radios comes about, which were now August, September-ish, I think, we have plenty of time to get that plan in place. And I agree with you, we need a plan that's a policy that we follow. I will tell you that, as Ms. Jones stated, some circumstances, there's not going to be immediate release. I think I could use a really good example here, is recently, the news press reported on two Missouri police officers that were murdered in the line of duty. It actually ended up being three of them that were shot, but two of them were killed. Those two officers responded to a disturbance. They got there, they went to make an arrest, the subject pulled a gun, both officers were murdered. One of them's car was stolen, his gun was stolen, and then there becomes this chase and a gun battle between the police and the offender, and then he crashes the car, gets out, engages the police more, there's another officer shot. Those type situations that are rapidly evolving, we're not going to be able to get that media alert out, you know, right now. It's going to be, once we make it safe, when we get the scene safe enough that an officer or a supervisor can contact the PIO and say, hey, we've just had an officer-involved shooting, we have multiple locations, get this information out. But obviously, while it's unfolding, that's going to be less of a priority, and also protecting our public. So, trying to put a timeline on everything is really, really difficult, because you may go to the scene of a car crash, roadway's blocked, pretty easy to get it out. You go to the scene of a car crash to realize it's a DUI hit-and-run, and the suspect has fled the scene and is crashing into other cars. Till you get that person secured, the media alert's going to have a delay in it. But I agree, a policy needs to be in place, that this is what we follow, this is how we do it. And I agree that the news press needs to be involved in that, because we want to have that good, we want them to be able to get the information out. Our priority is protection of the public, and that is part of it, is keeping them informed.
You mentioned several other communities that do have encrypted radios, Norman, Broken Arrow, Jinx. Have we looked at the processes they have in terms of news releases and media releases to form our, what we're trying to put together here?
Do you want to speak on it, Don, or, okay?
Just briefly. So, we're reaching out to several of those, and a lot of this is taking bits and pieces of different ones. And so, yes, I have reached out, and yes, I'm collecting. I've reached out to some of my friends from Moore. Oklahoma City spoke to them last week, and so, we are building those out.
Have they communicated that their relationships with their media have been all right, have been good through this, or is there, I mean-
Oklahoma City isn't encrypted, right?
Right. But I think Norman, Broken Arrow, Jinx were a few that were mentioned. Do we know anything about how they interact with their media and-
Well, you know what, I just want to say, what I've heard is all positive. And, but I want to say how we'll speak, how we'll work with our media. You know, we have new leadership here in my role, and the both chief roles at the news press entrusted longstanding, you know, with Michelle. I mean, this is a new leadership, a new day, and quite frankly, a new society. And so, I want to speak to the strengths and our efforts, and I, again, am 100% committed in building this out to where it is healthy for, you know, our community and for our officers as we build this out. And I'm fully committed to that. And I'd just like to touch base back that if we have members that, as we grow and we go through additional training, I am an advocate for continued professional training in all things. And as we continue to go through training and to become better, if we have members on our team that are not doing what is asked or needed, then they're no longer members of that team. I mean, that's just how we move forward. If they're not going to do what's asked of them and to follow the process and to become better and greater and to do what's needed, then we move in a different direction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would say, and this isn't a question, but just a comment, I wish it wasn't an either-or thing. I wish that people could have scanners and they weren't going to use it for- I wish it, that people could have scanners and they weren't gonna use it for, um, the ther-, the ther-, nefarious, um, bad purposes. Um, but I, I would say I come down, um, bottom line is I think our, our police and our firefighters need to be safe and that is the most important thing, um, within this discussion. And then how we can get, um, news to the media and updates, um, I think is secondary to our police and our firefighter safety.
I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on what, um, Councilor Hawkins says. I've been sitting here listening and, um, you know, I think one of the most powerful things that I did, and I encourage every citizen to do this, is take the Citizens Academy, um, because it truly gives you a, um, honest and real look at what our police officers do here in our community and, and we think about our community and what it is that they, they do and, um, I, I'm with you. I think the, the big thing is, is we want our community to be a safe place for our citizens as well as our people that are protecting us, whether it's police or fire. And I have never been more excited than to hear Rob McLennan become the editor for the, and the owner of the, of the news press. I just think in today's age and what's happening, um, things get out of control very, very quickly. And I can speak from a personal experience as someone who's had an individual family member who you end up, the police knew very well. Um, you don't want that, um, spread on the front page of the newspaper. And you don't want that post on social media, "Hey, was that your brother? Was that your mom? Was that your sister? Was that your friend?" And I'm not saying it because it's a personal thing, but I, I think we forget that, um, if it hasn't happened to you, um, it's not as real. And, uh, our officers and our firemen do their best to protect us and protect the community and they deserve to be able to do their job in a safe manner without, um, people who shouldn't be on scene or making assumptions happen. They're gonna happen regardless of whether we do this encrypted or not, but if we can do something to help curb some of that and allow some detail. I do agree that there needs to be something very much put in place so that there is a direct line, the media should immediately be, um, involved, um, as soon as possible, um, with appropriateness to, to what the situation is. Um, they need to do their job and they need to be able to do it in a, in, um, in a timely manner as well. So, um, that's, and that.
Councilor Hawkins, if I may, Lieutenant Bruce, our current PIO, reached out to, uh, Broken Arrow and asked how they interacted with the media and they advised that all of their, uh, news releases went through their public information officer. So, I don't have the details of how all of that works, the, the down-in-the-weed details, but that's part of what we're building on now.
I have what's gonna seem like a bizarre question probably for Rob Hill. I assume the storm trackers will be using the same radio system?
Well, sir, the way we plan to implement, and please understand, we're still in the planning and design phase, um, but one of the things that we are going to do, um, with permission from the city manager, of course, is we're going to currently maintain the old system that we currently have in place for emergency management just for the storm-spotting activities. Um, A, it was too costly to provide radios to volunteers. Um, B, the, um, responsibility, um, for the cost of the radio to lose, so forth. But, um, as, as we've heard this evening, as we hear when we go to the county fair in our booth, a lot of people depend on that scanner traffic to know where our storm spotters are at and what type of weather phenomenon they're seeing, right? So, we plan to maintain that as part of that, that will integrate with the new system.
Okay, I, I, that's why I was asking the question. When I first came to town, one of the best pieces of advice I got was from one of my neighbors who said, "Go buy a hundred-dollar scanner at Radio Shack and listen to the storm trackers." Because from somebody who came from a, a tornado hot zone and grew up in a different tornado hot zone, I moved into hyper-hot, right? And, uh, it, it gave us some comfort having relocated here with no storm shelter in the house at the time, that we could get a, a head start on Gary England or the, or the sirens going off here in town. And that was valuable to us and I think it's probably valuable to a lot of other people too.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Chief, uh, any further comments or parts of your presentation?
Yes, sir. We are the executive-level decision-makers for the city of Stillwater, department heads and the council. But I'm responsible for 83 lives and their families. I've been a police chief for the last three years and during my tenure as chief, I've always admired the council for doing what they felt in their heart was right. During COVID, the council made some tough and sometimes unpopular decisions. But the council made those decisions based on the safety of our community and our employees. Tonight, we have the ability to improve the safety of our first responders and the community we serve. We have the ability to protect the dignity of a family member who has lost a loved one and we have an opportunity to protect our citizens' personal information and their personal lives. I'm asking, making a motion to support the use of the safety and security encryption of the police and fire, uh, department radio traffic with the new public safety radio system. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Um, just a couple of quick questions, one of them for, uh, Ms. Carnley. Uh, I don't know that the, your office has done any sort of legal review of, of this issue or what we can or can't do from a legal perspective?
I've looked at it briefly and certainly to encrypt all radio channels as a policy decision. Um, the difference is, is how we would treat it under the Open Records Act. Um, right now, people have access to the information on the channel. Uh, we're still creating those records that are, um, subject to the Open Records Act. Um, notably, some of the, um, personal information that, um, was talked about this evening, social security numbers, driver's license, those are things that are specifically addressed as exemptions in the act. So, um, with encryption, we would have the opportunity then, once we get a request for those records, to do that proper redaction and to remove that information before it goes out. Um, but other, other than that, that's kind of the limited, um, that I've looked at it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, just sort of echoing some of the comments I've heard on council so far tonight, I mean, uh, I, I think the, the safety and, and the, um, wellbeing of our officers and the, their ability to do their job well, uh, and to respond and to protect our community in the best way they can. I mean, we, we use, uh, the most up-to-date technology we can when it comes to body armor, when it comes to vehicles, when it comes to all the other stuff that we equip our, our first responders with and, and this is an advance in technology that allows us to, to make this job somewhat more safe. Uh, and it, it seems, you know, certainly like something we'd wanna do, as, as Counselor Clark said, a best practice, uh, in the industry. Um, I also appreciate what, uh, Mr. Harris said earlier, um, you know, we, we stand up here, we sit here and, and listen to our engineers and our, our water treatment folks talk about, you know, what they think from a professional standpoint is the best way for them to treat our water or to collect our trash or to do those other, those other jobs. And I think we, as council members, uh, sometimes in the public, uh, we don't necessarily give that level of deference to our first responders and to our law enforcement officers. It's a, a job that sometimes people think, uh, "Well, I could do that too," right? I mean, there's a lot, I think, more second, uh, Monday morning quarterbacks when it comes to police work than, than just about any, any other line of work. So, um, I, I certainly want, uh, to give that professional deference to, to the opinions and, and to the, um, you know, the, the statements of our police officers and our police leadership that, that this is a, a safety issue that would be, uh, helpful for, for them. Um, from a, you know, a media perspective, I absolutely understand the concerns, uh, I certainly do. I, I think, you know, the transparency provided in, in the program that we're developing is great. I mean, I don't know that we depend on the local media to get our word out when it comes to these issues now. I mean, I don't know what the, the scanner, how, how often the scanner is monitored by, by local media. If they're not listening one night, we're not depending on them to get that word out. Um, uh, under the current circumstances, we're gonna do that anyway and, and we certainly can beef up that process. Um, and, and, you know, as Counselor Clark also said, the sunshine, uh, week, I mean, we, we want to provide timely, open, clear information. I think we, as a, a city and certainly as a police department, do that well now and I think that will continue going forward. It's just a question of whether you're getting that information live or whether you're getting that information delayed by however long. Um, I don't, again, to make another analogy, I don't know that our, our, um, I don't know, waterline crews, are they on public radios where people can, can scan and see where a waterline break is and hear about that as it happens or are we?
Yes, sir, they are.
They are? Maybe we should encrypt those too. I, I just, you know, it's a, it's a, a question of, you know, from an information standpoint, it's a question of, you know, how quickly we're getting that information out there and it's in our, all of our interest to do that as quickly and as efficiently as possible. So, I'm sure we'll continue to do that. Um, again, appreciate the presentations, appreciate, uh, Mr. McLennan, you being here to pre-present, uh, earlier as well. Um, it, it's a, it's a difficult issue. It's a difficult issue to try to weigh, um, the public's need for information versus officer safety and, and the efficiency of doing their job. Um, but I, I, I think personally, the, the best way to go here is to make sure that we're encouraging, uh, and supporting encryption in the system. So, further comments?
Yeah, if I may, I did, I also wanna say, I know I've asked some pointed questions tonight. I support encryption because it's important for the safety of our public safety and first responder employees. I have questions about the downstream side of this thing and I'm presuming that we're gonna be approving these other policies before they get implemented as well. Is that a fair assumption?
I'm sure we'll hear more about them, for sure. Um, I don't know that we approve every single one of those, but we can certainly make sure there's an agenda item as we get closer. We were saying August, September, before we're actually implementing this radio system?
Actually, sir, due to delays in deliveries and everything else related, probably more like November now.
Yeah.
And we actually asked to skip the month of October for implementation for obvious reasons.
Oh, yeah. There are some obvious reasons there. For those of you who don't know, football season, homecoming.
Homecoming.
Walk around. Walk around. Um, we, we could certainly put on a, an agenda closer to the, uh, implementation to hear an update of what our, what our public policy will be.
And I asked Mr. Hill specifically about the ability to provide radios to the news press and so forth.
We could get an update on that as well.
We'll need that all, for that information as well, but, okay, thanks.
Is there, um, further comment or a motion on this item for the evening?
Motion to support the use of safety, security, encryption of police and fire department radio traffic with the new public rate, safety radio system.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to support the use of encryption. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that motion passes. Thank you again for everybody, uh, being here to present. Item 8D, approval budget amendment reflecting receipt and expenditure of additional CDVG funds, uh, in the amount of $265,000 for the purpose of funding the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program Phase Three. Hello, Becky Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. During a city council meeting in January, our daily bread gave a report on Phase Two of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program as the funds had been dispersed, uh, by November of 2021. Afterwards, we received notice from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce that we could apply for additional CDVG CV funding to continue this program. So, we applied for and we were awarded $265,000 for Phase Three of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program. So, just as a reminder, Phase One utilized $150,000 of CARES funding. Phase Two used $490,000 of the CDVG CV funding and Phase Three will use $265,000 of additional CDVG CV funding. Once finished with Phase Three, a total of $905,000 will have been used to help with utility and rental assistance for Stillwater residents negatively impacted by COVID. Since this new set of funding is additional CDVG CV funds, the program will follow the same policies and procedures, including the application process, the necessary paperwork, uh, and approvals as Phase Two used. Our daily bread will once again administer this program and it is set to begin in the fall of 2022. As it gets closer to the start of the program, Dawn and her team will use all media channels to make residents aware of this new phase. And, um, the last two phases, we didn't have the problem, um, awarding this money. So, we will do, I imagine it'll be the same. Um, just a reminder of the program requirements, similar to Phase Two, applicants must be a resident of Stillwater within city limits. Applicants cannot receive a duplication of benefits, meaning they can't receive financial assistance for the same need from a duplicative source. Applicant must be considered a low and moderate income household based on income limits established by HUD and the eligible expenses must be incurred during the period that begins on or after January 21st, 2020. Um, and this will be given for utility assistance and rental assistance up to six months of past payments. Um, but just to note, since Phase Three is the administration of additional funds received for the same program, any assistance received in Phase Two will count towards the six-month maximums for utility or rent assistance applied in Phase Three. I do have a recommended action, but if you have questions, happy to answer.
Let's hear your recommendation, Becky.
Okay. Motion to approve the budget amendments reflecting receipt and expenditure of additional CDVG CV, contract 18119, in the amount of $265,000 for the purpose of funding the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program Phase Three. And just to note that later on the agenda is resolution number 2022-7 for approval to authorize Phase Three of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Community Resourcing, Inc., doing business as our daily bread to administer this program.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councillors, comments, questions, motions?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation regarding these budget amendments. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that passes. Excellent work, Becky, uh, your team. Thanks to our daily bread for continuing this work, um, nine hundred thousand dollars over the course of the last year and a half or so to help folks impact COVID is a big deal and we appreciate your work there. Item 8E, approve the purchase of property located at 2222 West Sixth in amount not to exceed $189,500 plus $2,500 for closing costs and 2218 West Sixth in amount not to exceed $145,000 plus $2,500 for closing costs as part of ODOT's Highway 51 Reconstruction Project and authorize the city manager to sign related documents. Monty Carnes?
Good evening, Mayor.
I expected to see Melissa Reams when I looked up and I didn't.
Melissa asked me to put this, uh, presentation together, so I'm happy to do so. Um, in February of 2019, we had a study session on options for Sixth Avenue reconstruction from Devon to Perkins Roads. ODOT has stated they will be responsible for the construction and dine, design costs to reconstruct the Sixth Avenue between those limits. City of Stillwater is responsible for the purchase of any needed right-of-way and any utility relocation costs. The design engineers have recently submitted the 60% design drawings and that indicates, uh, where the needed right-of-way will be. And two of the needed properties were recently put up for sale. We did not approach these property owners, they were on the market. That's an important point. 2218 West Sixth Avenue, uh, purchase price is $145,000, $2,500 for closing, $147,500 for that property. Next door, 2222 West Sixth, uh, $189,500 for purchase, $2,500 for closing, total $192,000. The 2018 property is unoccupied, it's a smaller footprint and it is not in as good a condition as the 2222. 2222 is occupied, uh, by a renter, but that lease expires, uh, in May and the, the renters have indicated they don't intend to renew the lease. Again, those are both important points. Here's the property or an aerial view, obviously Western Sixth, we're talking these two pieces of property. They're immediately east, uh, where we have the Welcome Stillwater sign on the north side of the road. Don't get worried, I'm not gonna explain this slide, I, in depth, you know? Gets my juices going, but I understand not everybody. The important point here is these driveways, it shows how much further they have to go north. It also shows two right-of-way lines, right-of-way and the, um, easement line and how closely they come to the properties. This slide shows that even better. You can see the line comes right up to the houses. Um, means those driveways would be, have to be reconstructed ju- just about that point right there. Um, severely restricts the use of the property, the front yards, um, you're gonna have utilities running right outside the bedroom, those types of things. We would argue that that damages the property to the point that you really can't utilize it for its intended use, therefore, we'd have to purchase the properties.
Monty, I'm having a hard, can you go back? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sure.
Can, didn't mean to make you jump out of your presentation. Um- Can, didn't mean to make you jump out of your presentation. I'm having a hard time seeing that far away exactly what, is that two houses or four houses where it cuts over?
Four.
It's four, right? The fourth house, it starts to taper back.
Okay, so there really are two more properties we're going to end up needing.
Two more properties, possibly another one there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on the slide? Again, the impacts, the right-of-way easement, utilize the front, crease slope of the property, steep drives are made even steeper, and of course, the big one is you have cars backing into Sixth Avenue. You kind of have that now, but you're going to have more traffic. And there's a possibility people can turn around those yards sometimes in heavy traffic, but they won't be able to in the future. Any questions?
Counselors? Do you have a recommendation, Monty?
We have a motion, recommended motion to approve the purchase of the property located at 2222 West Sixth Avenue in an amount not to exceed $189,500 plus $2,500 for closing costs. And 2218 West Sixth Avenue in an amount not to exceed $145,000 plus $2,500 for closing costs, and authorize the city manager to sign related documents.
Thank you, Monty. Counselors, questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the staff's recommendation on this item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the item's approved. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Item 9A is Resolution CC-2022-7, which is a resolution authorizing the creation of Phase Three of a grant program to assist Stillwater residents experiencing financial hardship due to COVID-19. Becky addressed this in her previous comments. Are there any questions, or is there a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2022-7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution CC-2022-7. Please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Reports from the officers and board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McNichol?
Yes, sir, everybody's probably favorite subject right now, and I'm being quite facetious. Traffic signal at Crayler Avenue and Perkins Road will soon be a four-way stop, and the two entrances off of Perkins Road into Pioneer Shopping Center are closed due to construction. We've had conversations with the contractor on this. Obviously, some of the shopping centers there with limited availability are not happy. As a result, they are going to open a couple of temporary driveways within the next couple of weeks when they can get, well, they promised next week when they can get the material here that they need to do that. If you keep, so one of those two entrances will be reopened. As you may be aware, if you've been on that street, there are no left-turn markers at several locations, and people are ignoring those. You're in jeopardy of getting a citation because there has been more police patrol in that area. As always, motorists are advised to expect delays, be aware of travel congestion, and plan for additional travel time, or locate alternative routes. We would also encourage people to continue to patronize their favorite merchant along that area and help them out during what is a trying time for them. You can find the latest updates on the Perkins Roads Improvement online at stillwater.org/odot or the city's social media pages. If you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Thank you, Norman. I went to a couple of businesses over there yesterday, and it's a mess. It is. Hopefully, we can encourage ODOT and the contractor to make some of that signage a little more obvious. I mean, the no-left-turn signs are small, they're down on the ground level, and so I can see sometimes people maybe even don't, you know, not seeing them. I don't know what you're supposed to do when you can't turn left. I guess you've got to go all the way down to McElroy and do a U-turn and come back around the other way.
Actually, probably almost Mercury Drive.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, it is what it is, but appreciate the work that the city is doing with the ODOT contractors to try to improve it as much as we can. Vice Mayor?
Yes, the city's Free Sharps Collection Pilot Program is still available through May 2022. Stillwater residents can pick up a free medical Sharps container at the Convenience Collection Center and return filled containers to be properly disposed of at no cost. Safe Sharps disposal is important for protecting our community, our sanitation and service workers, and the environment.
Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
OSU Landscape Architecture and the City of Stillwater Stormwater Program are hosting an online presentation about rain barrels on Wednesday, April 6 at 1:30 PM. Participants will learn why rainwater harvesting is important and about site selection and installation techniques for rain barrels. The virtual meeting is free and open to the general public. There is a maximum of 50 participants, and spots are filling up fast. Visit the City of Stillwater's Facebook event page for the registration link.
Thank you very much. Counselor Jeloski?
Don't forget that the bond proposition for a new fire station two will be on the ballot Tuesday, April 5 with early voting on March 31 and April 1. We encourage all registered voters to participate and make their voices heard. Visit stillwater.org/ttime to learn more about the proposition, Stillwater's current fire station two, and their plans for the new location and more.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
The Stillwater Fire Department is offering tours of fire station number two between now and April 5. These 30-minute tours are designed for community members to come understand the station and ask questions, come visit the station and ask questions. The next tour will be Wednesday, March 23 at 5:00 PM. A complete list of tour dates and details have been shared on the city's Facebook and Twitter pages, but they can also be found under the Time Projects page on speakup.stillwater.org.
Excellent, thank you. I will let you know that if you're looking for a new way to get involved in our community, we have vacancies on the Airport Advisory Committee, the Audit Committee, the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Drainage Appeals, and the Building Trades Board. Information on each board is available at stillwater.org. Please read the information about the Board or Committee before applying, as several require specific qualifications. The next round of appointments is scheduled for the April 4 city council meeting, so get your applications in. That takes us to the end of the city council agenda. Is there, oh, no, it doesn't. Hold on. I always miss that item of appointments. We had a number of applicants for an item 12, appointments to the Transportation Projects Advisory Committee. We had a number of applicants, and we appreciate everyone who has been willing to serve to help guide transportation projects here in the city of Stillwater. We're going to appoint five people to that committee, and I have a slate of five names that I'm going to nominate tonight. I would like to nominate Gary Clark, Tammy Brown, Roger Gose, Steve Whitworth, and Brad Rickelman to the Transportation Projects Advisory Committee. We have a motion and a second to appoint these five members to the committee. Please vote. With a vote of five to nothing, those folks are appointed to the Transportation Projects Advisory Committee. Again, thank you so much to everyone who applied. There are, as I just mentioned in announcements, there are a number of other opportunities to serve here on city committees, so we would love to see folks take advantage of that. That takes us to the end of the city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, city council meeting is now adjourned. All right, at this time, I will call to order, I'm going to go to Seda first. Sorry, Chris, we're going to do this one. And at this time, I will call to order the March 22, 2022, meeting of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. First up is approval of minutes from our January 10 meeting. Is there a motion on consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Next up, receive this Visit Stillwater Semiannual Report. Mr. Chris Norris. He ran everybody off, Chris.
I'm Chris Norris, Chairman of the Visit Stillwater Board of Directors. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm going to give you our semiannual report. I was a little concerned I was going to give you our annual report, the way tonight was going, but anyway, we're on the semiannual right now. We've had a number of events, and attendance has obviously picked up a great deal. Over the last couple of years, we've surpassed fiscal year 19 and 20 lodging tax figures already. We're continuing to focus on our marketing to visitors and communicating with residents to support our local businesses and increase sales tax revenue. On the marketing and communication goals that we have, we've distributed about, we have about distributed 40,000 copies of our Visitor Guide, and we think we'll hit 100,000 by the end of this calendar year. Our website traffic continues to pick back up. Our event page is being the most visited by far. We continually to feature locally-held events and unique to Stillwater retailers and restaurants in our monthly promo videos. Our new Stillwater OSU Campus Payne County map has been very popular. We've done 12,500 copies of that, and we're planning to update that every two years. We've taken that on as a responsibility. Our monthly e-newsletter and still-in-the-no postcards are distributed to increase event attendance and ensure our restaurant retail partners know when we have events coming and what kind of numbers we're expecting. We've also produced a rack card featuring OSU football schedule, a rack card that features OSU's football schedule, park-and-ride program, Fly SWO, holidays 2021, Mary Main Street and the Savings Pass. The card was distributed to all Stillwater Hotels, airport information stands, 24/7 visitor centers, Stillwater and Perkins-on-Cues, Perry Guthrie, Cushing Hotels and Chambers. We maintain visitor information stands at the Stillwater Regional Airport with the inbound and outbound terminals and provided conservatively over 40,000 in earned and paid marketing so far this year. Fly SWO is a consistent message within our marketing efforts. Our sales and service team continued to stay in touch and reach out with events that were canceled during the heavy COVID time, and we've been able to successfully rebook most of those and increase new events also. We continue to book events at the Payne County Expo Center. That, as of right now, is still our main attraction as far as with any kind of crowds. We tend to also are flexible enough that we can have a couple of different events out there. And, you know, I've told you about the Fanning Goats and stuff like that, and I'm not making this one up. This weekend, we're hosting the Texas-Oklahoma Longhorn Association, along with a Rabbit Breeders Association. So we're hoping Colin doesn't get any of those two mixed up while out there. We have also compiled a great deal of data to assist with the convention center, and we have sent that to banks, to the person doing the convention center, to hotel. We've been very active in that. And we will, once ground is broken on this, start recruiting heavily to that facility. But we need to wait till ground's broken, and then we'll have a timeline. Because the worst thing we could do would be book something and have to move it, so we don't want to do that. We spearheaded much of the marketing and promotion on the annual holiday 2021 events featuring Mary Main Street and Block 34. We did that through TV, radio, rack card, postcards, radio ads, social media, and website page. We incorporated the city's new SWO campaign to include Fly SWO, Shop SWO, Dine SWO, and Play SWO. We think conservatively, over 20,000 has been invested in marketing to locals to keep them here within Stillwater and to visitors to generate new sales tax revenue. We also have a Stillwater Savings Pass that was developed to further support local businesses through resident and visitor spending. The businesses, they can participate at no cost. We currently have 35, and the technology will link to the individual business's website for more information. I talked about this briefly last time. We've created Oklahoma's first GeoCash Tour. We did that in August of 2021. And to date, we have had 37 individuals from seven states that have spent 17 nights in hotels and Airbnbs and spent at least $10,942 in our community. Our January visitors' tax collections right now are 78% ahead of this time last year and well ahead, like I mentioned, of fiscal year 2019 and 2020. In July, Christie, myself, along with the mayor and the city manager, met to discuss an increase in the visitors' tax. I think we worked out a great solution with that, with the 70/30 split. We started January 3 on our campaign with a logo, information cards, a website landing page, and a visitors' tax Facebook page. So we'd be ready to go, and we spent hours talking to different groups and communities. And, you know, I think we will look back on February 8 as a monumental day for Visit Stillwater and the City of Stillwater with the 70/30 split. And I think our community feels the same by giving us ironically a 70/30 split and the vote positive. I think this is just a real game changer for what we're doing, and the convention center's going to help that, and the staff's going to help that. And lastly, I assume everyone receives my monthly emails. I'm sure you just hadn't spammed them or blocked them, but anyway, that kind of gives you an idea of the grants. It does detail every grant we do and where it goes and how many guestimates on people that are coming. So I do need to include you in that. So before I leave, I'll get an email. No, they're a real treasure. Anyway, any questions on anything?
Thank you, Chris. Trustees?
I don't have a question. We chuckle about your email, but I have to say that the, you know, we've talked tonight about communication and how important that is. And it has been very helpful to have that. As I looked through the semiannual report, I, of course, I'm biased. You guys have done a great job with Mary Main Street, but I continually am amazed at everything that happens at the Payne County Expo. And I don't know if there's a way that you can, is it appropriate, or is it to tout all those things? Because I don't think the public quite gets that you do more than just city and OSU. I mean, there is another entity, the Payne County Expo, out there that has a lot of these unique entities. So I just am saying that out loud, that as I read those monthly things and then see the, you know, hear those random things that are happening, I'm not sure the community actually gets how many things that we do host here in this meeting.
He just told you about the Longhorns and the Rabbits.
I know, but I mean, but, but others don't hear that. I mean, is there a way to share, I mean, do we, I don't know.
You know, we do, you know, a monthly newspaper article. Sometimes these things have not been approved when the newspaper article comes out, and that would be, you know, but I don't know, it's something we can work on.
Well, it's not something that...
And then the way social media is now, I guarantee it's on our social media site if you're, if you, you know, if the residents are looking at that.
Well, I just, I think it's important, over time, to talk, I mean, you guys are relevant, and you're doing things that are important to the community. And so I think it's those things that are, sometimes are not seen as much as some of the other things that are...
Yeah, we've got a great staff. Man, they've done a heck of a job, and we've got a good board. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate all your, yes.
I think it's also the case that we don't always know, I think it's also the case we don't always know that the things that Visit Stillwater is involved in, you have your fingers in a lot of pies, and things that aren't always obvious to people around town. But I know Christie, I mean, Christie has told me about going to the airport, picking people up and delivering them to hotels.
Yeah.
Because there wasn't an Uber available.
Right.
Right? I mean, there are all kinds of things that Visit Stillwater does to impact our community that we don't recognize. that we don't recognize.
Well, and I think the COVID deal helped, helped us help everybody else. Uh, just starting with the mask and the, and, and letting people know what restaurants were doing, curbside, who was open. I mean, I think those things mattered and you know, it was the staff's idea to pivot to that. I mean, it's, and you've got to thank them uh because they sat there and we got to help and we got to keep this sales tax base and that's what they did. And I think we gave over twenty-five or thirty thousand masks out and you know, yeah, we're here with everybody else.
And through the pandemic, you kept your, kept your doors open too.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. That was really a, they were going to stay open. Uh, there wasn't any doubt about that. As long as, you know, legal, I mean, legal, you know, following protocol, but I don't know what they're doing. This is what I got to put up with once a month. But uh, but no, they, they, they did a great job and we weren't closing until we, unless we had to.
Yeah, I, I think that um just overall, you know, I'm, I'm on the radio with Christie most, most Monday mornings and so I get to hear about some of that, um, what's going on at the Expo Center, but uh, social media and web and all that sort of thing. And so there's a ton of coverage. Um, and, and overall, I think we have seen through the pandemic that, that Vis- Stillwater has, has been, not that you guys weren't promoting inside Stillwater or to inside Stillwater, but it's just become much more visible, you know, the, the impact and, and the services provided, not just to bring people out from outside in, but to support what's happening here in Stillwater.
Well, and our, and our goal though is outside in, you know, and uh, that's what we're commissioned to do.
That's what we want. We want that money other, from other places to get in here.
Yes, we do. But uh, we also want to keep people here.
And I, I just wanted to say how much we appreciate the partnership with uh, the hotel tax issue and, and, and the transportation tax issue.
Yes.
Um, you know, the support from, from Vis- Stillwater and, and really setting us up, as you said, setting us up here over the next several years um for, I think, a, a just amazing group.
I think we're in a great spot.
Yeah.
And you know, it's, it's a lot easier to campaign when I don't have to play by y'all's rules. Now, I mean, what Becky had to do, you, you can't answer, you know, you can't push.
Yeah, you, you're an independent nonprofit, right?
I'm independent and I could, you know, I could go for it. Had to watch them, yeah, well, you know, have to be kind.
And that's why we appreciate you being there, Chris.
It was easier than what they had.
Yeah.
So thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Item five B is an update on the Tax and Financing District Number Three and its projects from Melissa Reams.
Good evening, Mayor. Well, sorry Chairman and Trustees, there we go. Had to transition.
I didn't know who you were talking to.
Melissa Reams, Deputy City Manager. I wanted to give you an update on TIF number three and some of the really wonderful projects that that uh financial tool has been able to invest in and kind of their status. Uh, from the report that was uh in your packet, you can see that to date, we've awarded about seven point one million dollars in funding. Now, awarded and actually putting the money into the project are two different things. So then there's a table down below that shows you exactly the status of some of our projects. Um, Merrifield Office was our first small business enhancement and if you've driven down Main Street, doesn't it look good? I mean, it's bright and it's purple and it just looks really, really awesome. So I've been working with Sarah Duckworth and she is one of the owners, one of the principals. Um, she's now in the process of turning in her receipts so we can make sure that everything was according to the agreement with the, with the trustees and then we'll be uh reimbursing them uh up to the fifteen thousand dollars. Lily's Lavender, oh my gosh, if you have not been to the New Grace Goods, you need to go. It is like, to me, stepping into a New York City salon of some sort. It is just stunning. I mean, that's the word that comes to it. And I know they're working on their classes in the background and they have finished out their VRBO suite upstairs. And again, it's lovely. It even has a washer and a dryer. How much better can that get? And of course, in true fashion, it is just, it, it ties with the downstairs. It looks beautiful. Um, Progressive Development Corp., uh, otherwise that project is known as Stone Cloud and it did run into a little bit of a headwind with some delivery. I think they just got the big cooler for all of the, the, the beer and the different things, but they're in the process of kind of working that punch list and I believe uh Mr. Williams is close to turning the keys over to the tenant.
I have the opportunity to walk through that with Mid-South is here.
Yeah.
And that is going to be a fantastic business.
Isn't it?
It is really, really cool.
I know. He's done, he's just knocked it out of the park. And just as a teaser, um, he, uh, Mr. Williams brought another project to the committee today. They do meet on the first and third Mondays at lunch and so we will be bringing the next progressive development project to you uh at the April fourth trustee meeting for your approval and your review. The Everyman Project is still in, uh, they're still looking for their funding stack. Uh, design is underway now, so we're, we're trying to make this progress. Um, we have started meeting weekly with the bank so that we can stay on track and it's my understanding that as of our Friday meeting, that the application will be going to the Small Business Administration. So while the um Bank First is going to finance the construction of the, the, the project at the point where it's ready to be converted to essentially a mortgage, that's when the SBA is going to step in and they're going to share the risk with the bank. So the bank won't be uh responsible for a hundred percent of the risk at that point. It'll be fifty-fifty. So working through that really was good for us. Uh, Everyman was our first project in and it allowed us to really clarify some issues that we probably are going to address with some of our bigger projects as we get there. So we're trying to find that silver lining um uh with the, the delay because I know we've all been anxious to see that one get started. Campus Corner Creamery, um, the cookies and the ice cream are up and going and so if you drive by Knoblock, you're going to see that fresh, clean uh facade there. And if you go inside the store, it is, it's expanded. It just feels great there. Um, continuing to work on the VRBO project in the back, you can actually see um the um, hold on a minute, the railing up on the roof where they're going to have the rooftop deck. So they've already got the railing installed. You can kind of see the little, what I'm calling a cupola, um, depending on which way you come in to that street. And having walked through it in its very rough stages, I can only imagine what it's going to feel like when it's finished out. It's going to be very, very special. And lastly, uh HK Development and as I'm, I'm following uh Vis- Stillwater, it, that is the developer with the convention center. They are currently, it's my understanding, Mr. McNichol may be a little more up to speed on this one, but I think they're still in the process of developing their funding stack and finding those key investment partners. Um, they still have an option on the property at the corner of Duck and in between Maple, Maple and Elm. Um, but I would imagine they're getting close to having to close on that property, so. We continue to see a lot of interest in the TIF and hopefully we'll can, just keep bringing you projects as we're able to award them. We are to the point now though, in the process where we are trying to encourage people to be able to um accept their assistance in arrears. So instead of being that somewhat like an angel investor and stepping in with the funding upfront, if we can make that happen in a, in an arrear situation, that's, that's the process we're going to need to seek out over the next few years with this, with the TIF. I do have a set of financial statements and I'm happy to walk through those with you if you'd like to see those. I think they were included in your packet or if you just have any questions on those financial statements. That was as, as of the end of January and again, that was just for our fiscal year twenty-two. A lot of the things that have gone on before that are going to be reflected in the fund balances of those, of those different categories. We do continue to, to collect monies from nineteen and twenty and are starting to see our twenty-one collections roll in. Um, so it's, it's, it's working. Let's put it that way. It's working the way it was intended to work and function. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Melissa. Trustees?
Okay. I'll see you next meeting.
Thank you. Are there any reports from the officers of the board? Is there an emotion, is there, is there an emotion? Is there a motion to adjourn Seda?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Please vote. Seda is now adjourned with a vote of five to zero. At this time, I will call to order the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Stillwater Utilities Authority and ask for questions or comments or a motion on the consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. Consent docket's approved five to zero. Item five A, Chris Knight's going to let us know about possible options regarding commercial cardboard recycling.
Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. Looks like I'm the last one standing, right?
Best for last, Chris. Best for last.
Okay, I was, I was uh in front of you two weeks ago, letting you know that um when our con- contract is up in June, uh June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two with our current processor, we have been using, utilizing his containers for our commercial roll-off program. Um, so I, I believe that in this presentation, that it will answer a lot of the questions you had a couple of weeks ago and then also you asked for us to conduct a survey, which we did that, so I have the results from that. Uh, the one question that was asked by Counselor Clark that it's not in this presentation, but you'd asked me about if we could purchase used roll-off containers. I reached out to everyone that we normally buy uh roll-off containers from and then some other companies and they didn't know of anywhere that you could buy them used. However, if you Google, you can find them across the United States, but just not in large quantities. Um, and then some of the prices on those were about half the cost of a new one, but they look like they may need five hundred to thousand to fifteen hundred dollars worth of rehab work to them. Um, this first slide is, what I'm referring to is we have a lot of these containers around town that we've been collecting cardboard from commercial customers. Um, I know there was confusion between this one right here. We also have these out there. They're in the downtown area and then some other businesses around town that we collect cardboard in, but we own these, we just rehab them. Um, so everything that I'm speaking about and will speak about tonight doesn't include this, losing this cardboard. We will continue to do that. And then I was speaking to purchasing some roll-off containers. It would be similar to these and these are open top. Um, other than this is a little larger than once, this is a forty cubic yard, we, we would be looking to buy thirties and twenties. And the reason I'm recommending to purchase these if we decide to go that route is we rent these in, in our fleet right now to, for construction projects or just residential properties. So if we didn't have a cardboard customer, we could still utilize these. And I believe you asked me, where did we have these containers? Here's the list of all the locations we currently have a cardboard container at, um, like in the first picture that I showed you. And then we, uh, we did conduct a survey. Here's the two questions that we asked. Uh, we called all those customers. So we asked them, would your business uh pay for commercial cardboard recycling? And then we also asked, would you consider leaving the city's waste service if we discontinued the commercial cardboard collection? Um, on the first question, these are the results. Fifty-nine percent said no. Would they be willing to pay for commercial cardboard? Uh, fourteen percent definitely said yes. And then we got twenty-seven percent that was possible. So those numbers could go either way. And then would they possibly leave the city of Stillwater's waste service without the cardboard service? Thirty-six percent said no. Forty-six percent said possibly, eighteen percent definitely said they would. Now, there's three, the way we see it, staff sees it, three possible options or solutions. And the first one is just to continue what we're doing. Uh, continue to provide the cardboard collection, don't charge for it, purchase the containers and they would cost somewhere close to the six hundred thousand dollars, so we wouldn't exceed that. We do collect two hundred and forty tons with this commercial cardboard program. Um, that would still, it would be processed at the MRF like it is now. We could purchase the containers and implement the fee structure that was implemented and uh that was approved in resolution issue eight, twenty twelve dash three. Uh, we would have operating costs of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, uh, an annual revenue of thirty-two thousand, four hundred. Uh, as you can see in the charts and as we said a couple of weeks ago, not everyone's going to pay for that, so there will be reduction on the amount of cardboard we collect. So we, just by the numbers, that'd be ninety-six tons. Um, if you'd like to know, so out of the two hundred and forty tons, a hundred and forty-four tons would not be processed at the MRF. So it would go to the landfill and that approximately cost us five thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents if that went to the landfill. Then the other option is to discontinue service and allow the commercial customers to take it to the convenience collection center. There would be no cost for the containers, um, the annual operating cost of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars because we'd be moving those containers down at the convenience collection, collection center more often. No annual revenue. Uh, we would have a potential annual revenue loss and that's due to customers losing our, uh, leaving our trash service. That would, by the numbers, reduce it down to only recycling forty-eight tons of that two hundred and forty tons that we showed you if it, um, if we did this option. Uh, so approximately the hundred and ninety-two tons that we wouldn't be recycling out of the two hundred and forty tons would go to the landfill and that would cost us approximately seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Do you have any questions? All these options are in the motion, so I'd be happy to read whichever one you like.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
I, I'm looking at the last two scenarios. Um, on the second one, the containers, I, I mean, I'm assuming that uh you have the container cost still at six hundred K, but if fifty-nine percent of the people are not willing to pay, I assume that reduces the cost by at least half.
Yeah, it would be around two hundred and forty thousand approximately.
And so in that scenario, the oper- not, not counting the, the container cost, the operating cost and the revenue sort of balance each other out.
Correct.
Um, whereas in the third scenario, the operating cost and the revenue loss are about, add up to about fifty-two thousand a year.
Correct.
So let me ask, how long we would be using the containers if we, if we purchase containers? Are they at least a five-year?
Oh, how long you can use them?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if you take care of them, we've had containers that we purchased, let's see, we got into roll-off business about two thousand and eight, so we still have them.
So as I looked at this, and tell me if I'm off-base on this, it seems like the, the option where um we would implement a fee, um, have fewer containers that we would probably need, but the cost and the revenue offset each other within five years would actually be a better deal because we're going to be spending fifty-two thousand dollars a year on scenario three. Or, or we're losing fifty-two thousand dollars a year on scenario three.
Correct.
So after the first five years when we've paid or so, that we've paid for the containers, we'd actually be losing less than we would be under the last scenario if we discontinued it completely. That, have I understood that correctly?
Yes, I mean, if you kind of like take the, the cost of buying the containers out of the equation, then uh you're correct.
Okay.
Yes.
But we'd still, even if we But we'd still, even if we bought the containers after five years, we, we would have, they would have paid for themselves going forward.
Yes, if we go down the fee structure. Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's actually a little faster than that because it's 39 plus 12 plus the $7,300 we spend to ship that cardboard to the landfill.
Yep.
So it's more than 50 grand that we're spending every year if we don't do, if we just say, we're not doing this anymore.
Well, I think the non, sort of non-monetary benefits also of, of providing businesses and industry that want to come to Stillwater, that have those ESG goals for social governance and environmental sustainability, that gives them an option to participate in that program and also reduces the amount of cardboard that could be recycled going to the landfill.
Chris, the rate structure from the old resolution, you said most of these would be 20 or 30 cubic yard slotted? Is that what people are using?
No, they'll be open top.
Okay.
Open, they'll be open top.
But 20 or 30, so that's somewhere in the 100, 120?
Something 150. I don't have that sheet in front of me. A month for the service, yes.
Okay. And when you asked folks, I, I assume when you asked them would they be willing to pay, you gave them those numbers?
We did.
Like it'd be 100 bucks a month?
We did. Because a lot of them responded, well, it depends on how much, and then we tell them how much, you know? And some were quick to tell us very quickly, no. And then some, maybe, you know, and some definitely, yes, so.
Do they already have a recycling fee and then there's a cardboard fee on top of that, or?
No, commercial businesses do, they don't have a recycling fee.
Oh.
They have a, but they paying for trash.
They're paying, they have a trash fee. I mean, they do have a trash fee. So it'll be on top of the trash fee, but they do not have a recycling charge right now.
Is there trash fee based on, so if you were a customer that decided not to recycle and therefore your trash was increased, would they have to have another dumpster potentially, or would their trash bill go up, I guess?
In some scenarios, well, yes. Some scenarios, they may have to get into a dumpster, or maybe they want to increase from two or three days service to six days of service, you know? In some of the scenarios, I'm going to say that they should increase their amount of service. I'm not going to say they will, and it may take a little while to get there, you know? After some messes occur and whatever, but they should.
Is the cost of a dumpster, is that comparable if you went from, like, would it be, would it matter?
It'd be, I'll be honest with you, it'd be cheaper to add a day or two of service versus paying the 100, $150 a month for the cardboard service, if that's what you're asking. Yes. Be cheaper to increase your days on the trash service.
So what, what's a trash service bill like for a commercial entity like one of these? Say they've got three days a week.
I think three days a week is somewhere between 100 and $150 for three days a week, just off the top of my head. I mean, we have two different, I mean, it depends on what size dumpster they have, because we have a 2 cubic yard, 4 cubic yard, so it just depends.
Sure.
If they have a larger dumpster, it'd be 200 some dollars for three dollars, three days a week.
So I, I like option two in general. The problem I think we have with option two is that we've got to order these things.
We do, so if you wanted to go down that road, well, we're going to have to put out a bid, then advertise it and get those back. Of course, it doesn't take long to review the bids for those. So you're looking at probably 30 days for that process, advertising and everything, and then ordering them. So we still have some roll-off containers that I came to you to replace the ones at the Convenience Collection Center in January, and we still haven't got those yet. So everything's just taking a long time. So what month is March, so it'd be, I, I don't, it'd be close.
Yeah. And, you know, we'll have to order, you know, we may not need as many as if we replaced everybody we've got now, but we'd have to order them. I mean, because I assume if, if we did, you know, 75% of the customers said, yeah, whatever, we'll pay the 100 bucks.
Right.
We've got to have a, a cart for them. And so it's, that, that part of it, I think, is problematic because we can't just go, okay, we need one more. We just go pick it up next week and bring it in. Oh, we need another one. We'll just go pick it up next. We've got, we're going to have to invest in maybe not full 600,000, but probably have to buy 250 grand worth right off the bat just to, just to make sure we can cover what we've got. And then if we don't have enough, or, you know, I mean, that, that part of it, I think, is a little concerning because really, what you really could do is buy all of them and, and then the ones we're not using for recycling service, you rent them out as
Correct.
constructing.
We could just rent them out in our rental.
Is that, is any of that revenue included in these projections? Like being able to rent additional construction containers?
No, I didn't include in that, no.
Are those rates about the same? If I wanted one of these at my house for
No.
a month while I was doing?
No, if, on our roll-off, if you ran a roll-off from us, it's, of course, you have a one-time $100 delivery fee, and then it's $300 every time you, you get it dumped. So you call us, say, hey, why don't you come dump this, bring it back. That costs you $300.
Maybe even a better business.
And we did update, well, we updated that rate structure on, if you remember, when we did the cost of service study.
Yeah.
We do have containers right now. I mean, it could be something to where we try to outfit as many of our customers that definitely want to pay the cost with the ones we have now and then, and just hope for the best that the ones that we order don't take a long time to get here.
I, I'm still frustrated with the fact that there are containers at these businesses currently.
Correct.
That will just be hauled off on June 30th. Is that what we're expecting? I don't, where are they going to go?
That was the plan, but some of those may not be leaving because that business is trying to take over those customers.
Oh, I see.
So to answer your question, they may still be there.
They just won't be ours.
Just won't be ours.
They won't be our customer. I got you.
So Chris, I know we have some limited amount of the regular dumpsters.
Correct.
That we rotate in and out because we repair them.
Correct.
Could that be a stopgap measure for, I know you'd have to pick them up more often, but could that be?
That's a possible scenario too.
Stopgap measure during the time that we're trying to transition into the bigger ones?
I mean, that, yes. I mean, that's a possibility. You know, even though in the survey, some said they would pay for, they're still a little bit unknown to, you know, when we come in there and actually say, well, we're going to start charging you now, maybe we have less, you know?
If you didn't have to ask us what to do, what would you do?
Well, I guess, and, and even though it looks like, you know, when we spend the money, that we get, eventually, they pay for themselves, you know? I, I just don't know when you're going to make all your money back for buying all those containers, you know? Well, to me, if it was a, a business decision, I would probably go down discontinuing the service and just have them bring the cardboard to the Convenience Collection Center. Because the, the amount of money that you spend on having each, you know, all the cardboard recycled at the MRF is three or four times higher than what it is, right? The amount that you're going to be taking to the landfill, I guess. If that makes sense.
There's a cost to us when it's recycled at the MRF?
Yes, so take, for example, this 48 tons right here that we're going to take through the MRF, where it goes through the whole process. Well, let me back up. This 192 tons, that's only costing us $7,000 to take to the landfill. It's going to cost us 20 some thousand dollars to get it recycled at the MRF. Because we, it starts costing us, once we take it to, which will be in July, Republic Services, so, because they're going to transport it from us, so there's a charge going across their scale. And then there's a charge for them to haul it to the MRF in Tulsa, TRT. And then there's a charge for them to process it. So that, that 192 tons right there will, to take it to, the whole process of the MRF is going to cost us 20 some thousand dollars.
What's it costing us now?
Oh, a lot less than that. I mean, it's, well, you take, so you got 120. The new process is going to be, you know, one ton's going to cost you between 120, $150 a ton to get completely through the whole process, to where right now it's costing us 30 some dollars, 31 dollars and some change.
But a majority of that's in and out of the landfill anyway, correct?
Most likely. But if we wanted to, you know, go down the route, you know, the recycling task force and what they wanted to see, then, you know, option two. I think if we keep doing it, we definitely got a charge for it. So option two, if we wanted to stay in the biz, if we wanted to, you know, try to collect as much cardboard and get it to the MRF, but far as the business sense of the whole, the whole thing, option three.
All right, let me complicate this a little more by asking one more question.
Okay.
These rates were passed 10 years ago.
Correct.
Are they at the right rates?
I believe the rates when I, for the 20 and the 30-yard open top are, well, I believe they are when you calculate the cost and everything. A lot of them are in the chart, no, they're not. But the 20 and 30 yard, the direction I'm wanting to go, I still feel that those are good rates, and that's why I picked those.
And those are just calculated on the, the cost of picking these things up, putting them back? I mean, because you're showing operating costs and revenue basically equaling each other if we're charging, right, under option two?
Correct.
So that's what, these rates are basically built on, how much is it actually costing us to go pick these things up and empty them and put them back?
Correct.
But it doesn't include, what is it costing us to do something with the cardboard that comes out of them?
No, though, that operating cost is, is just the collection of it. So labor, fuel, maintenance cost, and transporting it to where we got to go. And tried to average the distance because we could be collecting one way out west of town, taking it all the way, you know, to the east side of town. So I tried to average the distance by calculating that number to come up with that approximate annual operating cost.
Well, and if you look at the first pie chart, it speaks pretty clearly that, you know?
They don't want to pay for it?
They don't want to pay for it.
Nobody ever wants to pay for anything.
That's true, yeah.
You, you mentioned the other company that might be the competitor.
Correct.
Do we have any idea what rates they would be charging? Because they would
$140. That's because the customers, you know, they told us.
For trash and recycling, or just for, what are they doing?
Recycling.
Recycling?
Yeah, recycling. There's, there's a lot of different options out there, and I'm sure you don't want to hear them all, but of what we were told by each one of the customers when we spoke with them, so. But one customer did say 140 dollars to do the cardboard recycling.
So it'd be cheaper, the rates would be, our rates are cheaper than that.
Yeah, if we go with the 20 yards, we're cheaper, right? Can't remember the 30 yards, I think it was $150, right?
Yes.
So it doesn't seem like they would have great luck getting customers either if they're saying no to paying a city fee.
Well, I think they're offering trash collection somewhere on some of those. I don't know the whole story, to be honest with you.
I don't know that I've had a decision up here that was less clear. I, I mean, I, I, you know, Chris, I, I can completely agree with your business evaluation to say, I mean, if we're just talking about what's the, what's the most cost-effective plan here, it would be just to say, we're not doing it anymore. If you want to recycle your cardboard, bring it to the Convenience Collection Center. We're not going to spend any upfront cost on containers. You know, that certainly is the lowest cost option for, for the SUA. But we also have had a strong sense in community of people wanting to have the option of, of recycling and, and to recycle as much cardboard as we can and not send 192 tons of it to the landfill every year if we can avoid it. So I, I feel like, you know, an option that at least allows some of those businesses to, to, to have the service if they want it. And I don't know if that option just says, makes it more expensive, actually raises that rate to a real cost. I mean, there may be a few that say, yeah, we want a container and we'll pay you 250 bucks a month to, to do recycling and at least have that option. We may be able to do that just at the beginning, at least with the, with the containers we have, and still offer it as a, as a, just a more costly option for some of these customers. But it, it does seem very expensive to go out and buy, because I mean, if we go buy some now, we're going to have to buy a chunk of them. And I don't think we can just go get 10 and, and hope it works out, right? And if we do option two, we're going to have to order a big chunk of them.
I mean, you'd be looking at ordering at least 20.
Yeah.
That, that's what I had in mind. You'd commit to ordering 20. And they are, when we, when we purchased the ones we just purchased to replace the ones at Convenience Collection Center, they were about $8,500 apiece, then plus freight. But, you know, I tacked in a little extra in this cost because I'm sure they went up since then, you know? It seems like every month or two, the steel prices are going up, so. But yeah, you make a commitment to buy at least 20.
Chris, have you looked at all at any of the solid waste options for, specifically around recycling in the infrastructure bill?
Yes, I mean, I've looked at everything that I could find that's been, and been sent to me, and I haven't, I haven't came across anything to help us out with this scenario.
We also have grant writers that we have specifically asked to look across our whole book of, of business, so so far, nothing.
I've had a few meetings with our grant writer. We've talked about different options, things for my department and things we could do, and we haven't, we haven't came up with anything. Definitely nothing, something for, like this.
I was just thinking, I know there's one, there's specifically a recycle grant, and then there's the Energy Efficiency Block grants that allow for discussions or for more recycling in the community beyond just the energy audits and things like that. I just wondered if that would help offset costs somewhere. I think for me, that's, as I look at the funding that's available, kind of in the way federal funding is coming out across the board, things like this, being a community that does things like this, will help us get more money down the road.
I don't disagree. The small cardboard carts, do we have more of those?
We have, we have quite a few. I mean, they need to be rehabbed. So there's cost to that, like some of them, the bottoms are, you know, rusted out of them. They need some metal and work and paint and those types of things. But yes, we have some. They just, it takes some money to get them ready.
I mean, honestly, I think my vote here would be to, to say, we're, we're not going to do it the way we do it now. If you want to pay, if you're willing to pay, and I think the rate should be higher. I think it should be a little closer to what it actually costs us to get rid of the cardboard. Then, you know, we make that available, given the, the carts that we have available, because I assume that number will be fairly low. And then maybe we can pursue some of those grant options and see if we, there's a way to, to make it, you know, more cost-effective to actually bring it back on a larger scale. But it, it just, it doesn't seem particularly financially sound to dump what will be quite a bit of several hundred thousand dollars into this without really much return. without really much return. I don't know. I, I don't like any of these options, Chris.
I think that, I mean, Mary, you have a good point, right? When we went through the recycling task force and we're looking at cost of service and the rate structure for residential solid waste services, right? We looked at the increasing the rates based on what, you know, if we did, if we had recycling, we looked, right? We were looking at our own facility. I mean, we increased because the cost of service for those things said that we should, right?
Right.
And so, we increased that. So, I think what we're hearing you say is that these rates don't reflect the cost of service if we're transporting the cardboard material to Republic and then the MRF.
Right, not, not to get it to the MRF and through the complete process, no.
So, it'd be interesting maybe to understand what the true cost of service is there?
Yeah, I mean, I think, from what we're seeing, I think if we were charging the true cost of service for that cardboard recycling, a very large percentage of our commercial folks would say, "I'm not paying for that."
I mean, so many, you know, they kind of squawked at the $100, $150 a month, you know? And you're probably looking at, to answer your question, $250 or $300, you know, a month to, you know, to balance out or equal out what the full cost of getting that cardboard to the MRF and recycled. In that scenario, I would see that number dwindle quite even more if people are willing to pay to, to do it.
Is there any efficiency with scale? If more people did it, would you gain any efficiency? Or would it just be more expensive?
It'd just be more expensive.
All right, somebody come up with an idea.
I'm still looking at the first, I'm looking at the fact that they're not wanting to pay for it. So, I, I, we may have all the good intentions of the world of wanting to do this, but if the majority are saying they're not, I mean...
How many, so you said you have some containers on hand?
Yes. I'm going to guess about, for that particular size, probably 10 or 12.
And you think we would need to order 20? When you say need to order 20, would that include?
Well, that wouldn't include.
Additional, so you think 30?
No, if we included those in there, you know, you can cut that down to about 10 of that 20 that I said, you know? Because our numbers are showing us, really, there's only going to be about 20 to 25, maybe 30 or, probably 20 or 25, they're willing to pay for it at that current rate. So, if we have 10 or 12, so we're going to need maybe purchase 10 new ones. But that is also, those containers are currently, you know, out being rented, so that's when they come back, you know? They're not just sitting in the lot right now. But we do have old dumpsters that could be rehabbed, like I said, that just takes some time to get them together, and we'd have to...
Chris, if you bought 20 of them tomorrow, and this program just absolutely went belly-up, and you didn't have any of those out for cardboard, how many of them would be rented, do you think?
The way it's been going in the last few years, the most, majority of them.
I mean, with, with those...
We actually have a waiting list that's fairly lengthy most of the time on our, for our, to rent our roll-offs. We just don't have enough. But it is, it comes and goes, though. You know, I will say there's some times that we don't have a lengthy list. I would say 80% of the time, we do, but there are some downtimes.
Do you have any sense of what like a yearly return on a single container is? On how much it gets rented out and how many times it gets dumped? I mean, are they coming in 1,000 bucks a year that you make off each one of them, or?
Each one of, yeah, we're making more than $1,000 off each one of them a year. Because each time we rent one out, you know, you're guaranteed to, you know, dump it at least two times, you know?
At the minimum, 300, yeah, 400 bucks for...
So, yeah, we're making a lot more than $1,000.
Sophie, if you...
If you only dump it once, it's 400 bucks.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
So, most customers, it's usually about $700 at least.
Sophie, implemented option two, and everybody in the end said, "No."
Yeah.
You've still got an offset with the real income on those.
That's true.
That's true.
And I wouldn't have to come back here asking to buy roll-off containers because I'd already have them.
Because you want to buy them just for the, for the roll-off business?
Yeah, we, yes, I mean, we, we never have enough, to be honest with you. It's just, we try to buy one or two every, when we can fit it in the budget and everything. So, it's, that wouldn't necessarily, it's not going to go to waste. We'll have them in our fleet for, like I said, 20, 30 years.
So, I mean, then maybe it makes some sense to go ahead and, with option two, order 20 of them. Probably take those rates a little higher than what they're listed at now for recycling. If you can get 10 of them out there doing recycling, great. And then, the rest of them, you can rent as roll-offs. We're probably, I mean, that's not a terrible... And then, we've got them available if we can find some funding to help offset some of the recycling costs, then we can get more of them out to customers and...
Need to approve, because is it all in one, sorry?
Well, for me, to move forward and everything, you'll need to approve option two, if that's what you're wanting to do tonight.
And how much would 20 containers cost?
High-end, $200,000. I mean, I, like I said, the last time we ordered, they were like $8,500 apiece. I estimated $10,000 apiece in these numbers just because I didn't know how much the metal prices had fluctuated, so... So, at the most, $200,000?
So, I guess I was just wondering if the rates are wrapped into them?
I don't think we're bound to his alternative motions, right? I mean, the, the agenda item says, "Take possible action," so I think we could take any, any possible action.
As amended by the city council or trustees, whatever.
So, we could have a motion to purchase 20 commercial recycling cardboard containers and then just ask Chris to come back to us with a better, you know, a different proposed fee structure for how we start to implement that.
Okay.
Is that reasonable? Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Motion to purchase 20 roll-off, recycling, roll-off containers.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the purchase of up to 20 commercial recycling roll-off containers. Please vote. All right, thank you, Chris. We look forward to another conversation on this topic sometime soon. All right, there is nothing else on this agenda. Is there any report from the officers of the boards? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn, please vote. With a vote of 5 to 0, this is still our utilities authority is now adjourned. And that concludes our meetings for the evening.